You want to say the flowers and the positive thoughts? So, I'll add that at the end as well, but I'd rather start that way, too.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is January 19th, 2023. This is our second meeting for the month, and I'm going to call it to order. But first, we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. So all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. For those of who are joining us by Zoom, I see there's a few people online. I ask that you keep yourself muted, and if you want to participate or have thoughts that you want to share during the public hearing portion of this agenda, I would ask that you unmute yourself. We'll call upon you, state your name and address for the record, and we will be happy to listen to your comments. Okay, so everyone's muted, I see. Thank you, that's great. Going on into the public hearings, which is the first part, we have a special permit use application of Linda Sukiyasian. Sukiyasian? I'm not sure. Okay, I do not know. Oh, 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 you want to read the call to public hearing first? Okay, all right.
Attendance?
Attendance? Okay, if you must, then you must.
Give me a second, because I have to find it. I know there have been a couple of changes on the board.
She go keep us in line.
I'll try regardless.
Come back first thing.
June Daly here. Andrew Miller here. Diane Dorsey.
Here.
Timothy Zigmatt.
Here.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Joan Beely.
Here.
Alternate Nikki Zimbisky.
Here.
Alternate Andrew Leggany. He was just reappointed, so I suspect he's not sworn in yet, actually. I'm just like. He was reappointed on Tuesday night, I believe.
Are you sure?
Maybe not. Okay, and Steve Biella Jr.
Here.
Is a remote alternate. Okay.
All right, terrific. All right, so I am going to seat because Nikki has been participating with the public hearings on some of these items that are open and will be decided tonight. And I ask that she be seated for the meeting. And thank you. All right, so now, Brian, you can do the call.
All right. County Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, January 19th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Council Chambers, Burlington Town Hall, 240 Kensington Road, Burlington, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or remotely as provided below. A special permits/site plan amendment application of Linda Iovana CCARC Inc., for charitable institutions used for a CCARC day/employment site and related site improvements at 1103 Chamberlain Highway, currently in Prince of Peace Lutheran Church in accordance with Burlington zoning regulations 5A3D and 11L. B, propose amendment of Linda Allstrand to abolish Burlington zoning regulations, Section 11DD of the zoning regulations. C, propose amendment of the planning and zoning staff to Burlington zoning regulations, Section 11DD. D, special permits/site plan application of developer J.R. Klisland slash Connecticut self-storage for self-storage at 22 Burlington Turnpike. The applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Burlington Town Hall, 240 Kensington Road, Burlington, Connecticut, dated and told charges made. Day of this, 27th day of December 2022 at Burlington, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission. New Burton Herald legal notices slash classified advertising dates of publication, Monday, January 9th, 2023, and Monday, January 16th, 2023.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind, I'll just re-clarify that I did just check the minutes from Tuesday night. It was not Andrew Leggany, it was Scott Hamel that has been reappointed.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I read the wrong list.
No, that's all right. We're all very excited. All right, public hearings, special permit use application of Linda Sukiyasian. Thank you, for an accessory dwelling unit at 5 Huckleberry Lane in the R15 zone. This is going to be continued to March 2nd, 2023. Do we need a motion for that?
No, that was done at the last meeting.
Okay, fine. Item B, special permit site plan amendment application of Linda Iovana CCARC Incorporated for charitable institute/institution used for the CCARC day employment site and related site improvements at 1103 Chamberlain Highway, currently in Prince of Peace Lutheran Church in accordance with the Burlington zoning regulations, Section 5A3D and 11L. Okay, so do we have anyone here for the applicant or speaking for the applicant?
Good evening, ma'am chair.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Attorney Michael Carrier for the applicant CCARC Inc. And with me tonight, it's the CEO of Linda Iovana, Anna Caradona, our Vice President of Support Services. So we're here tonight, as you know, the Prince of Peace Lutheran Church at 1103 Chamberlain Highway. It's for sale, and we venture into a contract with them to purchase their property for the purpose of providing day services to some of our clients. We've outgrown our space at our headquarters at Slay Road in Britain. We had a temporary space at 450 Marshall Street under a lease, which the property was sold and now is being converted for housing. So we were looking for a space, and this particular space suits our needs very well. It gets to have some small rooms and has some larger rooms. And it's a, it's just a great location for us, and we wouldn't anticipate doing any exterior improvements or, I should say, changes other than a handicap ramp, which we require. But again, the space suited us very well, and the Director of Support Services, Anna Caradona, can explain a little bit about what would actually occur during the day at the building. And it's just, you know, we, I think that it's a use that's not intrusive to the neighborhood. It's Monday through Friday. It's working hours, like 8:30 to 5:00, kind of thing. But I'd like Anna Caradona to come up and explain a little bit about what occurred there. Should you approve the special?
Thank you. Everyone. So I would like to tell a little bit of our services. So CCARC is an agency that's been based since 1952, supporting individuals with intellectual disabilities. So we have several different programs. We have a program that's called Day Support Options. And our programs that is called Day Support Options provide individuals with fun activities. We do music, we do painting, art classes, we do yoga, we do cooking classes. We also have a program that's a work program. We provide group supported employment, where we provide individuals a job coach to four or five individuals, and they go, they meet at our facility, and they go to their specific sites. It could be a place like a hotel. They go to the hotel with a job coach, they do their job during the day, and then once they're done, they go back to the site. They eat their lunches, they get ready, and they head home. So that facility that we're looking at, the Kansas City facility, is mainly, we go there, we set up our programs. Where we're going out to the community, we'll go out to the community for their job sites. Where we stays in the building, stays in the building under the supervision of their job coaches. The job coaches are assigned probably six to seven individuals, and they're responsible for those individuals. We will have some people that will be coming over from DBS, the Department of Developmental Services, they're our funders. And what they do is that they'll come for meetings, meetings about the individuals, what the individual has done throughout the year, and then they'll head out. So that building will be used for, again, some of the individuals that will stay in-house doing some of the fun things. We like the building because it's divided, it's classroom setup, we can have our smaller groups and we have teacher individuals. Like I said, we've been doing this since 1952. When individuals graduate from the high schools, they refer to our programs. We do assessments, we figure out whether or not they're individuals that are ready for work or they're just going to be doing our programs for fun. And I've had individuals who have been in the agency since they graduated high school till now that they live in another city home because they're 90 years old. So, you know, they're our family, we are, you know, mission focused. We're there for, you know, support individuals with disabilities. But yeah, we also have accountability for supporting them and their health and safety. So, you know, we haven't, I think this is a great place for us. We want to have a permanent home. You know, we are leasing in places where, you know, all of a sudden, we're, the lease is pulled away, and we have to find places. So having our own home, maintaining our own home, own home, being good neighbors, that's, that's, that's who we are. We are, we are focused on our mission and vision of our agency and our community. We want to expose individuals to our community so that the community can also gain from our individuals. You know, we go out to restaurants, we go into ice cream shops, we go to the mall, we go to different places. So I hope you consider us or your neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as many of you are aware, CCARC has a long history in town. We currently have three group homes that we operate, one on High Road, one on Sims Road, and one on Old Farms. And of course, we had a facility similar to what we're trying to establish at Chamberlain Highway on Farmington Avenue at the old Kensington Furniture Site. It was the Doc MacIntosh Work Center that we operated for many, many years before the property was sold and the building was torn down. So it's a relationship that, you know, we've had with the town. We have our golf tournament at Chamberlain, of course, every year, as you probably know as well. So we, we actually provide a lot to the town in addition to, we receive a lot from the town. So we feel it's a good partnership, and just like to introduce our CEO, Linda Iovana.
Hi, everybody, I'm Linda Iovana, and I'm the CEO of CCARC. So just, you know, Anna did a great job describing, you know, the activities that we do and what we would be doing at this particular site. CCARC Incorporated in 1952, and we provide an array of services for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. All of the people that we serve are over the age of 18, typically over the age of 22 when they come to us. Where the site that we'll be at will be predominantly our employment site, some day programs. As Michael said, it will operate during, think of school hours. We will have staff that will be there after hours until, say, four or five. There typically will not be activities on the weekends. We do have a report from the police that have taken a look to and designated that there will, really won't be any disruption to traffic that we have changed to traffic patterns. We do have some vans that come in the morning, you know, much like a school bus, and drop our individuals off. Our families will bring their family members and drop off and then pick up again around 2:00. I think that Anna really did describe our, our service as well. We expect that there'll be between 50 and 60 people on site throughout the day, and then, you know, maybe 25 staff people. There's adequate parking there for us. Another great feature of the building is that it has like that circular drop-off. So it was a very safe way for people to get, you know, disembark from the buses and then enter the building safely. None of the people that we serve will be, you know, roaming around the property. Everybody will be with a, you know, their designated direct support professional. They're always under, under supervision, I guess I'll say, and it's organized activities. You know, maybe people might be outside enjoying nice weather or playing basketball or that kind of thing. You know, I'm, I'm happy to answer any particular questions that you may have about our services or concerns that, that you might have.
Terrific, all right. Now, this is all part of a public hearing. So is there anyone in the audience, the audience, who wishes to speak to the commission regarding this application, whether it be for or against, now would be the time to address the application, address the application to the commission?
Evening, everyone, and welcome back, Maureen. Good to see you. Present, 240 Kensington Road in Burlington, Economic Development Director. In my previous life, before I came to work for the Town of Burlington, I worked for the Arc of the Farmington Valley, and my job was literally job developer. So essentially, what they're talking about is what I did for a living. The nice thing about what CCARC does and what a job developer does, it helps give individuals independence. They provide housing, they provide training. During the time I was doing my job, I'd gotten a number of folks' jobs in different places. The one that most touches me, when I had a crew of four women that worked at Chili's, two did food prep and two rolled silverware. They got their chili shirts. You've never seen people as happy as that. Most of us think about a chili shirt, big deal. For them, it meant it was something bigger than themselves. They could be part of something they never thought they would have a chance to do in their lives. And for them, it's so much more than what's on the paycheck, it's that they're getting a paycheck. That's the kind of things they're serving, writing here at this site. What I love about this as well, from a Burlington side, is it is going from a mission-driven, which is a church, to mission-driven, the CCARC. The goal is to help people in the community. And the fact that CCARC is here already, I think is tremendous. Organization with a 70-year history. I have known Linda for many years, when she was at CCARC before. There is definitely a love for what people do. You ever hear that you've never met or read social worker? You've probably never met anybody that works at a CCARC that's rich. They do it because they love doing it. Economic Development Commission unanimously supported this. I think it's a great reuse of the property, and I myself think it's tremendous that we're looking to do this. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else, either in person or online? Yes, sir. You'd have to come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record.
Hunter Mathrina, 495 Orchard Road.
Okay.
About six or seven houses away. I just wanted to speak in favor of this. I've been helping along the way as well, with trying to find them some space. And, you know, what they do is, I think, a very heartfelt and community-based program. Just a lot of Burlington families there. And also, I would hate to see that church, you know, knocked down for housing development. I think there's just all positives, brings more people in our town, you know, more people buying lunch downtown. It was important enough for me to drag that little bugger down here tonight. And also, I have some, a close family friend who is in one of their living facilities and will be for life. You know, it provides a tremendous value to families as well for, for care that is otherwise sometimes. As much as we try to do certain things at home, I take care of an 88-year-old grandmother, but there comes a point where I'm going to need living help. Can't do it all, so that's it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Trish Lamontane, and I've been a member of Prince of Peace for almost 40 years. I represented the real estate listing site, and we have received a tremendous amount of applications that we were very, very diligent in researching and reviewing. And we're very excited for CCARC because their mission and their vision strongly resembled ours. So we're very excited about it.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, before you leave, just, anyone else? Commissions, do we have any questions at this time? Yes, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Wood.
I've actually been in a company where they actually have some, your crew come in, and they were working in the cafeteria, cleaning up, things like that. It's a wonderful thing what you're doing here. My question, and you probably said it, this is not to become a housing facility. This is just a recreation facility or a building?
That's correct. It's not, it's not for housing at all. It's a day program. So, and there's, you know, different abilities for each of our clients. So like, as you mentioned, some will just meet there, then go out to their job sites or will stay there and have their own program. And, and it varies, it could be anything from stuffing envelopes for a company, you know, jobs that, that we can provide or, or more social activities like, you know, like exercise programs and things. But it's just, just like, just as a day program.
Okay, and I never realized you had three other buildings that you were utilizing. Is it your plan to, to come on some of those buildings and stay, bring everybody over to Prince of Peace? Or I'm saying Prince of Peace correctly.
Sure, yeah, no, those, those three properties are residential homes. So we have varying numbers of clients at each home, but there's, there's staff 24/7, as you can imagine. And right across, one is on High Road, right across is Bella Restoranti. And it's a duplex, white complex, right? And, and I point it out because you'd never know. Yeah, and we're Doc MacIntosh's home, offices, where our other group home is. And it has been one of our first, actually, on Sims Road, right? And then the newest one is, is Old Farms. And, yeah, so those, those, they, they do, again, it's amazing because as much as, as I think Mr. Mathrina said, as much as, you know, people want to care for their children at home, it comes a time where, you know, they want a little independence too. And, and this provides them with independence. And, and the whole point is, it's really person-centered, making, getting them, you know, their, the clients to, to achieve as much as they possibly can, whatever, whatever that is.
Again, thank you. Any other commissioners?
Yes, I have known their homes and my projects and stuff like that. I lived up in the area, never been a problem, a great thing. I just, you know, I want to make sure that you guys realize that there's going to be some updating that building to code. And, you know, you said the handicap ramp, I'm so amused, but handicap bathroom is probably too, so I don't think that church has a member. But, and the only other thing that I would concern is make sure that it goes up to standards of the classroom environment. Because that's a little different than the church environment, having those classrooms in there. I really hope they come real quick, because it's a good use for the property.
Is there anyone else? Yeah. Just one question, if you would say, please, for the record, the hours of operation?
Anna, correct me if I'm wrong, so you would, we would say, say 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM? Did that cover?
That would be the program, but staff gets into the building at 7:30.
You hear that, 7:00, 7:30, staff would arrive and a client would start to come in around 8:00?
Monday through Friday or their weekend activities?
There could be weekend, weekend activities for the staff to lead up at the facility and head down to their job coaches, I mean, their job site or, or meeting. But it's not like a regular, it's, yeah.
And the closing time you said was 5:00?
Weekdays.
Weekdays, but what time?
The clients will leave earlier.
Yes, so the individuals, they have a six-hour contract, so what happens is that they, they're in by 8:00. They start coming in at 8:00, and then we start dismissing at 2:00 PM. So by 3:00 PM, there might be two or three individuals left in the building.
Okay.
So everybody, then the staff will be there possibly 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, the latest, people finishing up their paperwork. But as far as the individuals are concerned, they're all out of the building by 3:00 PM.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Monday through Friday.
Um, hi, Diane, any more questions? Okay, I just have a couple of technical questions, so I'm not sure who can, who can answer, right? All right, the parcel itself is rather, it's, it's rather large. Okay, so you have the church and you have the, in the back of the church is the paid parking, which I imagine is going to stay there. Okay, and then how big is the parcel totally?
Six acres.
Okay, so you have six acres, and you're just going to be utilizing that front portion, which is the church, the roundabout, parking in the back? Are you having any plans for the other acreage in the back?
We don't have any plans at this time.
Okay, all right. The reason I'm asking is this, is because taking into consideration the clientele and the special needs and the supervision, I would ask the commission, as we deliberate, if there's, if we want to suggest fencing to the back of that property? Because I do know that it's up to, I believe, town-owned property, which is part of bicentennial. So, and I just want to make sure that there's no mishap where somebody may be distracted or wandered off or whatever. And I'm sure this won't happen, but to prevent that potential, we may want to suggest fencing in, in the back so that whatever area you're going to be supervising within or working in, it's more condensed and now open to a public, a public park that somebody might just go off into.
So my comment on that is that we have the Department of Developmental Services that's been out to the property, and we have to get their approval of our site, because they're very, you know, versed in the population that we're serving, and they take a look at what hazards might exist on a site, and we have to get their approval prior to purchase and certainly prior to bringing programs in. And we have gotten the approval from the Department of Developmental Services, and the only request that they have for us is to do an accessible ramp from the lower level out.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and I also want to stress too, in regards to Mr. Ziegler's comment and your comments, Chairman, is that we're going to be working with all the departments too, and we need the site plan approval, obviously. And so those comments can all be taken into consideration and whatever requirements you see fit to, to add to it, we're, we're happy to accommodate. I mean, the, the, again, we've been working quite extensively with the fire marshal and building officials now because we didn't want to do too much due diligence prior to the zoning approval, because obviously without the zoning approval, we can't go forward. And then, then, you know, as, as we do the, our due diligence, it's, that's where the, it really starts to cost money, as far as, you know, the, what the cold requirements. And then, for instance, you know, fencing, we were really, the big, a big issue of ours was whether or not sprinkler system would be necessary because especially since there's no, the water main doesn't go down that far. So you would have to be on-site or have to be extended, which would be fairly expensive. So we're, you know, we're in a, we have to, before we actually go forward, we have to make sure that the costs are in line and, in line of what we could afford or what we're willing to spend, I should say, we could afford to do, what we're willing to spend for the property. So again, so any of these, these comments, you know, absolutely, we're happy to look at it. And I think the, when it comes in for site plan approval, too, be another shot in.
All right.
I got one other question. You said, I think the property is, and I realized that it's a big piece of property. And, I don't know, there's probably a housing need in the future. And I would want to see that, that if a housing comes in, you know, you want the housing in the rare, rare for your, your people. That would have to be a special permit again or for?
They would need review. A full review for the planning and zoning commission.
It is the one building that's been out there, building houses out there. And I think it might be a good idea. But, and your fire system could be a dry system.
Right, yeah. So we're looking, and then again, before we spend too much money on the due diligence, we wanted to see if we'd even be able to operate there. But we, certainly, there is no plan to do anything other than the day program there. And even if there were, then we certainly would come back to.
And, and Maureen, just a question for you, maybe you have the answer.
I, I have a page of notes, so, so, but ask the question first, and that's great.
The question would be, and my last point would be traffic, because I do know the building. And I do know that on certain days, especially on Sunday, if we were leaving church or whatever, it would, it would be difficult to get out of that driveway because the people coming from the Britain, the Chamberlain Highway, they fly over that hill. And you have to be very, very careful. And I know that you're talking about vans and people dropping off and stuff like that. But I just want to make sure that the police commission will rein in on this, or the police department.
They actually have already checked in with them, yes. And it was a report to chief from Officer Tom Bobak. I reviewed the special permit application located at 1103 Chamberlain Highway. There does not appear any traffic concerns as projected use can reasonably be expected to produce traffic volumes less than or equal to the properties prior used as a church. The frequency of the building use may increase, but that would not expect to create any new traffic safety concerns.
Okay, I'm just, I'm cautious, people, they do fly.
Yeah, same as it is, you know, a classroom environment. Maybe you could work with the police department to get some signage up that might say like school zones. So that people are more wary to watch out for that as they come on the top of the hill.
Yeah. And again, I think certainly with the, the site plan approval, a lot of these, the details will, will come into play.
All right, and is there anyone else? Maureen? Well, I meant, I was going to come back.
That's not, I expect to go towards the X, that's all good. Um, okay, so some of this will be a little bit redundant, but it's just easier to fly through my list this way. Um, I just want to note that the applicant worked with staff prior to filing applications to determine the category of use and the applicability of the application process. And the use appears to fall within section 5A3D special permit uses for, I'm going to turn to Dylan. Oh, he's gone. For this word, because I can't ever pronounce it, religious charitable or less seminary?
Yes.
Seminary institution subject to, he pronounces it flawlessly. Um, subject to section 11L, which are the special regulations for the same. And with regard to those regulations, it is not proposed to be for the insane feeble minded or as a correctional institution, which is what is prohibited in that section. So it seems to fit the category of use. In addition to the detailed narrative description of the project provided with the application, then, then you all have that and have reviewed it in your packages. It appears the existing circular driveway drop off area would be adequate for the cars and transportation vans to queue in addition to the parking area that's around the back of the building. Although the site plan does not show the delineated parking, we did review the, the parking. It's very faded at this point. And it appears there's approximately 55 spaces out there. It scales to be wide enough for the two rows of parking as well as two-way traffic. So I, we don't have concerns, they're not proposing any changes to that. The existing parking and drive was for religious uses were approved, including for the expansion of that use some years ago. And the, this use does not have a defined parking requirement in the zoning regulation. So it's to the commission to determine if the parking is adequate as provided. Should the commission determine that the parking is adequate and satisfied, staff would recommend the condition of approval that the parking be restripped and signed for parking and flow to the satisfaction of staff prior to their occupancy. As stated, the traffic officer submitted statements, submitted comments, so, which identified no concerns, but that was already addressed. At minimum, building and fire code use categories will be changed from church and therefore there are expected, as stated, to be interior and possibly access renovations that are required, including that ramp she spoke of. And it is our understanding that the applicant has been working with town officials for the design requirements and those details could be worked out through permitting. Comments were received from the building department, fire marshal, health district, traffic officer, economic development commission, conserva, and conservation commission made comments at their January meeting, which I'll get to in a minute. Engineering, water control and wetlands had no comments. Any, another condition that would be suggested would be any outstanding and permitting interdepartmental comments should be incorporated into the decision. Any building permits will require zoning review, including for the anticipated handicap ramp and the modifications of signage. And staff suggested those site modifications to be allowed through zoning permit review unless staff is, feels they're, you know, extraordinary and should come back to the commission. So he suggests that any modification to the services is described within the application, that narrative that they provided and what they have just presented in response to your questions at the meeting, be subject to zoning review before they make any modifications. And that no overnight facilities are proposed or approved, be approved with the application at this time. Staff also notes, and this gets to the conservation commission, staff also notes the relationship with the parcel to the trails and public lands of Timberland Park, which is across the street with an access point almost directly across, it's a little to the north. You can see it in the dark shading, just to the north of the property, on the outside side of the street. And the, and bicentennial park, which is the parcel to the back. The conservation commission raised, and staff had raised it, however, in my absence, I wasn't able to pursue it. But then conservation commission at their meeting did discuss this and advised that there's an informal agreement was understood with the church that allows through trail access through the property to connect, for connectivity between Timberland and bicentennial park. And that we wonder if the applicant would be, would continue the informal access agreement or work with staff to formalize an easement to the town to allow public pedestrian access, which facilitates the town goals for connectivity of open lands. And I'll quote from the, oh, any formal agreements, of course, would have to be vetted and go through the proper processing of the town to be approved. From the conservation commission, minutes of January 2023, "The commission would like to see the agreement with the previous landowner honored allowing access through the property to connect to open space. The commission recommends the town work with the new owner to continue access. It would be in the town's interest to maintain any previously maintained trails."
Thank you. All right, anything else? No one in the public? We are in a public hearing, so. Not a motion. Before we close, I'm wondering if the applicant has a comment with respect to the through trail access.
Yes, and, yeah, we understand the need for access and we would be willing to negotiate an agreement with the town or the conservation commission. Because the only concern we'd have is liability, obviously. So as long as we're held harmless from somebody walking, falling in our parking lot or something, then it wouldn't be a problem, especially a lot of the, the, the usage is probably on the weekends, I would imagine, for the, in the trails and when we, wouldn't necessarily be there. So again, as long as it, it wouldn't affect our, would have impact on our insurance or liability, then certainly. And I'm sure, I'm sure it can be worked out.
Anything else? So, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Ms. Percy has a motion to close the public hearing. Second by Mr. Zigma. Were there discussion, questions? All those in favor, I, was opposed, so move. Okay, moving on to the proposed amendment of Linda Alstens to abolish the provision of relations, section 11 and 2D for the planned residential infill development. How are you today?
I'm good.
Good. Thank you for letting me speak. No problem. Is this good enough right here?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, why we think to plan residential infill development, the amendment should be abolished.
Okay, is the microphone closed? I'm sorry.
You have to really lean into it, I'm sorry.
Is that okay? Yeah, that's bad. Okay.
This amendment takes BT1 zoning commercial properties off the tax roll forever. Instructing high density rental units will mean higher costs for schools, police, fire, and social programs and will result in higher taxes for all. This amendment states in its purpose, "It is not intended to facilitate the conversion of non-residential uses, but to redevelop motel uses into permanent dwellings. The only option for the vintage motel properties is conversion into high density rental units." What is, what has happened to motel owners being able to sell to who they want to, not just to developers intending to build high density rental units? This amendment states, "The location, general bulk, height and other features shall be consistent with the town and neighborhood in which the proposed development is located and shall take into account the extent to which the proposed use and, and its features and appearances and will be in harmony with the surrounding area, including the effect upon property values in the neighborhood. There are 13 vintage motels on the Turnpike in Berlin, of which 10 directly above single family homes and neighborhoods. There will never be any harmony, appearances or otherwise between owner occupied homes and prammed together rental units. There will be an emotional toll on the neighborhoods because of the amount of units that can be built, starting on a half acre motel property. We will lose our sense of safety, stability and well-being. Property values will tank. Also, there's obviously no harmony with rental units jammed 15 feet away from commercial properties. The amendment states that units can be constructed 15 feet from side or rear boundaries. This is outrageous for both commercial and residential neighbors. The underlying BT1 zone has side setbacks of 25 feet and a rear setback of 50 feet when abutting residential. These underlying buffers have been thrown out, which states the obvious, that renters are much more important than the totally disregarded neighborhood property owners. The maximum number of units per motel property is determined by the following. Total gross land area divided by 4,000 square feet equals the number of units allowed per property. Here's an example. 1867 Berlin Turnpike has 1.91 acres, and it butts Mary Anne Court. 1.91 acres equals 83,200 square feet divided by 4,000 square feet equals 20 units, which would be built 15 feet away from residential properties. This amendment was written specifically for 1676 Berlin Turnpike and a butts Holly Court. At one of the last zoning commission meetings regarding the high density rental application for this property, the developer and commission members did admit to working closely together to get the amendment written, passed and this application in the pipeline. There was a potential of 20 units which could have been built on that property. We are so thankful that the commission unanimously denied this application, citing the density of the unit's appearance and the effect on all of us. This amendment also states, "In addition to frontage on state highway 5 and 15, the track may have access on other roads if the commission finds traffic conditions warranted or that, if desirable, to facilitate public safety. Nothing herein shall be construed to require that access be required from state highway 5 and 15. Our neighborhood is convinced that 48 Holly, which is me, which owns 95% of the land at the end of the cul-de-sac and a butts the rear of 1676, is ripe for the taking by eminent domain under this amendment. Apparently, entering and exiting vintage motels and all other turnpike properties is, is safe, but entering and exiting high density rental complexes might be deemed dangerous. The Comfort Inn at 354 Berlin Turnpike has an additional entrance on Demming Road. The Coronet Motel at 811 Berlin Turnpike could have a second entrance off of Woodruff Circle. There is no way any of the other motels can have a second entrance. So why is Holly Court in the crosshairs? It has the side buffer at the end of the street and has the only other possible second entrance. Again, this amendment was written specifically for 1676 Berlin Turnpike. Otherwise, why would this section be in the amendment? The developer is now suing the town. Who knows when the suit will be settled or who will be on the zoning commission at that time? If this amendment is still in place, Holly Court owners could be very vulnerable. The town could cite safety issues and.
Ma'am, could you just wait a second? Whose phone is that? What is that?
I just let them know. Recording.
Okay, I'm going to start over a couple of sentences before. The developer is now suing the town. Who knows when the suit will be settled or who will be on the zoning commission at that time? If this amendment is still in place, Holly Court owners could be very vulnerable. The town could cite safety issues and take enough land at the end of the street to construct a large driveway into the complex. According to the application traffic study, there would be over 225 trips a day coming through Holly Court. This would kill us. The commission has wisely put a temporary moratorium in place for the construction of rentals. According to the Berlin Affordable Housing Plan adopted in May 2022, there are 494 apartments currently in the pipeline that have not yet been completed. Why do vintage motels have to be converted to high density rental units? There is a potential for an additional 192 rentals that could be constructed on old motel sites. What Berlin needs is affordable homeownership, not more rentals. This planned residential infill development text amendment is poorly written and favors developers and renters over property owners. There is nothing positive in this amendment for the abutting property owners, their neighborhoods, nor taxpayers. We hope that the commission will remove this entire amendment from the zoning regulations. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the commission regarding this proposal? Commissioners, any questions at this point? Or should I go right to staff?
So as previously indicated during the hearings and for the adoption of the current regulation and the subsequent site plan application that you, you considered, it's clear that staff supports having this text and that allows for feasible redevelopment of existing motel sites. Motel sites are a non-conforming use. The sites under function tend to have a high.
The sites under-function tend to have a high occurrence of emergency services, are aging and often in disrepair, and serve as and do serve as interim housing and are not set up to be dwelling units code-wise. But that's how they function as dwelling units. In addition, the section has been cited as an avenue to serve a housing need identified through the Affordable Housing Plan, and the text has been supported by the Capital Regional Council of Governments in their comments. The cotton across admitted comments that they are not in favor of the repeal. It should be noted that the text modification has been text modifications have been drafted by staff per the commission's direction and guidance for doing so. And as a result of concerns for clarity that have been raised throughout the public hearing process during that site plan amendment, or that site plan application, rather. Unfortunately, the draft amendments were being finished for distribution on one four when I landed in the hospital. So they got them tonight, and therefore sections to the text amendments will be distributed. I think they have been. I think Fran put them out for you. Otherwise, I'll look for them in a pile here. And I suggest those be discussed for the next public hearing. It is on tonight's agenda, but we can get to that later. I do want to clarify with regard to Ms. Allstrand's comments that we've had on the record disagreements with regard to the interpretation of the regulations. I do not believe the way the regulation is currently written precludes redevelopment into other allowed uses within the zones. And however, the proposed amendments or allows for access through a property or taking of land to provide access, I believe that intent and the way it's worded indicates for those properties that do have access on multiple roads, have frontage on multiple roads, or otherwise legal existing accesses. However, the proposed amendments that staff has been working on addresses those language confusion that and portions that could be misinterpreted. And therefore, staff is not in favor of deleting the text. I think it serves in.
You said that you thought that the, excuse me, that the that you have right now for the text amendment, which is the next application?
Mm-hmm. Should be in your supplement in the package that she Let me make sure there's not a Yes. It does say draft. I don't think I removed that before I and it is, it would be expected, and again, this is not a public hearing for that. This is a public hearing for Ms. Allstrand. However, it would be expected that some of his suggestions, some of the text amendments that are proposed there were from going through the record, looking at the sites, comparing to other zones and sizes, et cetera, and that the commission, of course, would be discussing whether it's appropriate or you for their tweaks.
Okay. So it would, oh, I'm sorry, sir. Do you want to address the commission? You're still under public hearing, so that you can do that, but I need you to come up and please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Scalia at sixty-four Bluebird Lane. My question is, what is the process of telling these hotel owners that we're going to take your property? Can you just go ahead and take their property?
Well, I don't think we're here to take anyone's property. Not Ms. Allstrand's. We're not here for anyone's property. What this was, was a proposal to allow for folks who own those little motels along the Berlin Turnpike to give them, to share with them an idea, an opportunity to update what they have and to bring it forward to make it more viable and more of a solid rental as opposed to a weekly or monthly rental. So that was just an option for them if they wanted to utilize it.
Okay. Yeah. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Because I bought a motel right now, and the way it's written, they're going to do anything. I hope they put up an eight-foot page fence between my property and that property. I don't have to worry about it.
Well, that's, well, this is what we're all about here. We're trying to get through the weeds and make a and to figure out what our next step would be.
I just don't want to sell my house.
Yeah.
I'm getting too long to go do that just because somebody's going to start infringing on my
That's not the point.
My little bit of border.
That's not the point of this commission.
Thank you.
All right, no problem. Thank you for your thoughts.
Oh, sir.
Excuse me, John. John, I'm sorry. Can I, I'm sorry, Scalia, is it?
Yes.
Please just sign your name and address.
Sure.
So that we have it on the record. All right, so if I'm understanding this, because it seems like we have a couple different layers that are happening here. We have the request to abolish and just eliminate that from the zoning regulations. But we also have, I think, a duty to try to figure out how to help people who do own these little motels and perhaps helping them refurbish them or to find another life for them. But I think we all agree that we don't want to, we want to make sure that we are careful because we want to make sure that whatever we do going forward would be something that would fit with the neighborhoods and fit to protect the homeowners that are there existing now.
So my thoughts would be going forward that seeing as we have two things on the agenda tonight, dealing with the same issue that maybe we keep both items open?
If that's your motion?
Yeah, I made some motion to continue the public hearing.
Okay, motion to continue. And do we have a second on that? Oh, second. All right, thank you, Diane, for the discussion. And all those in favor? I as opposed to move. So we move on to the second one, which is the proposed amendment of the planning and zoning staff to the Berlin zoning regulations, section eleven TD, planned residential infill development. Okay. So, Maureen, I'm going to go over parts, stop two.
I'm sorry, I have another copy.
Oh. You do? That's great. Thank you. Because I think mine's kind of like floated around someplace or left town on me.
Um, so I'll start a presentation if you'd like.
Go right in.
It'll be very short.
Yes.
Due to my absence, it will be very short. We do have supporting documents and some statistics and other things that I wasn't able to polish up before tonight. I thought they'd be confusing if I tried to distribute those today. And again, I'm sorry for the delay in drafting the modifications to the existing tents. When the hearing was scheduled for tonight, we did not anticipate the hearing load for December and January that we've had and or that I would be out with a medical emergency. So right now, and I have provided you with the existing text and the suggested amendments to the text, which are proposed as a result of the direction from both the commission and the and regarding the language raised during related public hearings that we've had over the last couple of months. Some of the, I'm sorry, I don't have my page immediately available. Yeah, that I just sent. I'm sorry. I thought it was the next page. And I go You'll see in that text, I've talked about the increasing the setbacks. Also, you have mine. Yeah. I'm sorry, give me one second. So the to note was that the, I clarified that it is existing motel parcels, and I just want to note with regard to that and the first section, number one, under the purpose, that the motel uses, any that are existing non-conforming, have been used as a motel until that use is superseded by a new use, whether they are actively motels now or not. If the last use was a motel, they get to continue that.
Thank you.
That non-conforming use, that's zoning law. It's a non-conforming use that exists. I just added the existing motel parcels and that it isn't and added the sentence that not to preclude redevelopment for other conforming uses as provided in the zone, because that seemed to be something that confused the public.
And then let me just stop you there. That just basically means that if they have enough property to put up a little gas station or whatever, they could do that and
They
back away from the use of a motel.
Right, so anyone who wanted to eliminate a motel and do another use permitted or otherwise listed in the zone, whether cycling use or a special permit use, they could still apply for any of those things. This is not a regulation that says motel uses can only be, and never was it intended as per the public, the original public hearing, never was it intended to say motel sites have to be redeveloped for housing. They, it's an option that was to make the redevelopment feasible for some and to serve a need. So clarified by adding that, I added the effective date of the regulation because it was a brand-new regulation effective November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and that just helps any future zoning board or officers to find the start date. If you put it right in the reg. So I added that. The, and then as far as the frontage and access, I added the sentence where the parcel has frontage along other roads so that it identifies that the parcel already has that access. It's not about taking another person's property in order to get to another road, which created some confusion with the last application and and but would allow access from those other roads as the original text.
Can I ask a question about two A? As you talk about the track of property and you can be affected in regulations November sixteen, twenty-one, as you say, with its current use of a motel having a total area of not less than a half acre, nor more than three acres, and be served by public water and public sewer.
So that's no change. I'm not proposing a change at that.
Oh, you're proposing that to change?
I'm not. Only the bold is, the bold and underlined or the crossouts are the modifications to the regulation. However, if the commission has any other provisions to, you know, to otherwise work on the regulation, there's no objection to that. I just identified the things I've noted and taken notes on and felt needed clarity.
Well, it kind of jumped out. I'm sorry, just a motel. It sort of jumped out a half acre. I don't know of any. Do we have a motel on a half acre?
Yes. Did we? So, so that was one of the details that we were working on. At the end of December, Dylan has actually created maps of each of the motel sites that show how many units are on them, how many acres the parcel is, how many motel units exist on the property, how many and how big the parcels are. I don't have that list in front of me.
Okay, sorry.
But if you choose to leave the public hearing open, we do anticipate getting that out to you by next week.
Yeah, we'll probably Do you have any?
Yeah, I got a couple ideas on this. Because of the first image that I got of this development to what we ended up with and our regulation as now. I just looked at our R seven zoning residential zone, seven thousand square foot lots. Okay. If we went with something like the R seven zone, which requires thirty-foot backyard and the side yard, ten and fifteen, I think it's twenty-five foot. Okay, that's what the zone requires.
You wouldn't believe what I had to do to get on.
Late now.
Excuse me, Mr. Zignat.
Yep.
David James, please keep yourself muted.
That a forty thousand or one acre property under R seven zone would allow five point seven six units on a one acre property. And on a two acre property, similar as what we, you know, one four nine before two acre property would allow eleven units on the property. That would follow our zoning that we have in place right now without the other regulations. So I think of R seven's fifty foot frontages. I don't know what it is. I forgot exactly what it is. Maybe a hundred foot, fifty by hundred lot. Okay. But the R seven zone, taking in those zoning regulations that we have in place and modifying those if we need to modify. It would set the number of units that could go on a piece of property pretty easily. You know, like I said, one acre property can get five point seven or six acres, and use forty thousand, but acres a little more than forty thousand. Take the builders, builders, forty thousand. So six units on a forty thousand, eleven on a eighty thousand square foot lot, probably that'd end up with twelve on a real acre. No?
No, I'm just shaking my head at the noise from the hallway. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So
I told you to shake your head.
If I may, those calculations are, some of those calculations are in the report that I wrote and are dependent on the or were used to make some of the modifications that you see in bold. The two, the R, R seven zone, which is our two-family zone, the zone that allows two-family, does require a ten thousand square foot lot for the two families. So therefore, five thousand square feet per dwelling, which is
Same thing.
The way I tried, unless I edited incorrectly this afternoon, I think that's the one, how I ended.
R seven
The recommendation.
Regulations, basically, and not use the two-family part of the R seven. The calculated number of units on a property.
To do seventy-five hundred square feet rather than
Square foot, yeah. Seventy-five hundred square foot on
Rather than the two family.
Right, right. So that'll, that'll set the number of units on any property, just divide on the square foot they have by seventy-five hundred.
You're very generous, Tim, because I
But, but
I was going to R eleven.
Or
Down the fourth.
Just, just the zoning that will allow something. When we, when we first went into these units, I remember our fast calculations at the time was basically if there was twelve units on a piece of property, that I could figure out about twelve single-family homes out of these. You know, so to multiply like twelve units, probably twelve single-family homes, that's the calculation that we're using. But I think that might be a little too much for the property. And if you go down to R seven and use the single family part of the regulations. Now they could build this house a similar size, what our seven lot allows. And it would be more advantageous to the developer to build sound, single family homes itself, single family homes than building rental units. Okay. So that's that's looking at developers, they're getting, you know, they're looking always the best and most profitable use of property. You know.
All right.
That's when they're designing something they want the most.
Anyway, okay, I may mean to interject. I know we were going over some stuff.
No, that's fine. I could either go through it in order and get to each section or we can or you can mull it until the next meeting.
I think we're probably gonna mull this one over, but. I did say.
Or give me and you know. I'm thinking if I give, if I point out the changes I made and the and the a little bit of the reasoning because I don't have those details of the calculations I made and the analysis of the different zones that we have because I did look at the zones that allow multi-families and how many units per acre in each of those as well. But that's not ready to be distributed. But if I think that.
For a minute, to the extent that there's anybody in the room that wants to have a conversation, they need to leave the hearing room. Because what's going to happen is when we go to do minutes and we need to do a transcript or whatever, we're not going to have a good recording. I have gotten up like five times already. Please, okay? It's to everybody's benefit. We record these meetings. It's required by law. We need a clean recording. It's a very distracting. I'm trying to listen. I am counsel to the commission. I'm trying to listen to what they have to say about this issue so we can draft something that makes everybody happy. Okay, so please leave the room if you want to talk. Let us get on with the meeting.
Okay, so then in in section C, I simply, it was a modification to the formatting so that the requirement of a stormwater management plan or a traffic statement is clear to the applicant and more in their face than if it's lost in a paragraph as it was in the original text. And then as far as the number of copies with regard to plans, we have the checklist and requirements that we need and they fluctuate over time depending on the number commission members. We have the number of people that need to review the plan depending on the type they are. So on that one and two, under that next section, per department requirements is simply cleanup so that we don't have our checklist conflict with the regulations. Then we go down to the next section and that's the section that Tim, the commissioner Zignat just discussed with regard to the number of units. So we'll do a little more work on on that. As far as the density goes at the direction of the commission and you may, you know, that's clearly a modification that the commission is interested in discussing. In B, in response to the hearings, I added that where it had had more than six dwelling units in each building. I made a modification that the unit units shall be standalone, unattached dwelling units. And you know, I struggled with the separation distance between the units and would like to throw that to the commission. I was in my intent was to make it so that that separation didn't become a parking lot, a parking area. So I was trying to make it, okay, they're separated. It's still, you know, more dense property and more dense housing and allows therefore for free space instead of each unit to have all that. All the green space around each unit, but at the same time have not have enough for parking. I'm thinking, you know, the 10 might be a little small and maybe it's can be written in in a different way to not have it be parking. But I that's one of the things I actually am my copy left highlighted as work on this or ask for direction as to what you feel that is. But I did modify based on direction from the commission to have stand standalone, unattached units. And then further changed the the design criteria from the two and a half feet and 35, two and a half stories and 35 feet, which is customary for single family dwelling units in all our single family zones. However, it was indicated that lesser height might be desirable. And I went to one and a half stories or and I need to check with the building inspector as to what that would be as far as height goes, but 25 feet, thinking that that allows for your typical bungalow Cape Cod style, you know, you can have a loft or a or a smaller room on the second floor without raising the roof much. It's it's a one and a half story and that's a typical small house design. It would be one and a half stories. So that's where that came from. I correct in F, I corrected a spelling mistake. It said less that instead of less than or equal to simple clerical or editing thing. And then revise the wording, but for clarity with regard to minimum set route requirements and 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 put it more in the format of the our other regulations as well as the direction that we've gotten. So no change to the front, which was 40 feet from any street line. The side increased that from the 15 in the original regulation to 25. And the rear to 40 feet again provisions for the commission to determine if appropriate or not. And in for the lot, there was language that said the lot shall only be required to have one street line, which will be shall be from State Highway 515. That's a conflict with the regulations anywhere or other provisions in the regulations that any street frontage is a front. So if you're a corner lot in the most zone, I think in any other zone, both yards have to be a front yard. If you're a corner lot or both anywhere you have street frontage is a front yard, requires a front yard setback. So I cleaned that up to have the the front yard, you know, to eliminate that they would only be required to have one front yard. However, part of that also in that regulation, I just want to point out that it talks about the setback requirements on many of the motels have existing nonconforming setbacks. And again, that's on the maps that we were were working on as far as what and they're estimated on those because we didn't do surveys or or poll surveys, but we we did scale them. And there is a provision in section for C for C four with regard to nonconforming setbacks where the commission has the ability to to allow for to determine a nonconforming structure can be moved within a site to decrease the nonconformity. So I think that has to just be cleaned up to make sure that you're not conflicting with your own regulation if we have a requirement with regard to setbacks. It's not conforming setbacks that already exist. Next part. They there was some concern with regard to visitor parking and parking becoming a problem on adjacent properties or streets. And therefore, in J, I added the applicant shall demonstrate there's sufficient off-street and off-traveling visitors parking as determined by the commission because there's no provision for that otherwise quantified. And then to be fairly consistent with some of the other multifamily regulations as well as comments made. Add a provision with regarding a minimum of usable screened private outdoor space. And I used the 400 square feet looking through the regulations. Again, these are all numbers that the commission, I I'm anticipating the commission will be discussing. And we'll provide where we got these numbers or why why I chose the numbers I chose. But a lot of it was going through the existing multifamily regulations and seeing where where we require them in other instances. And then I added the the provision to to foster community environment, common land elements such as gazebo, community garden, pet area, gathering area, or other suitable community area shall be provided to the satisfaction of the commission. That was a major talking point during the hearings. I think that wraps that up. All right.
Yes, I'll suggest something to the planner as she's trying to put this together. There is developing off Little Town Road, just that's a common use single family development. And it's just lot lines drawn on a map, but it's all common use. You know, they're they're possessing use lines are drawn, but the property is a common use property or or
Familiar with it.
Right. So that regulation there with the common use might help you in this one, trying to make the properties common use. Single family common use area.
Anyone else from the commission having questions at this time?
Not questions, but just some comments. I know we went between R seven and R 11 as a guide for how many units per acre and maybe we find a half a median between the type on seven and four, that's just five units per acre. As far as the unit shall stand alone with the minimum separation of 10 feet, I agree. I think it would be nicer to have it a bit wider. In a way to solve that so it doesn't turn into parking. Even if we had 15 or 20 feet, maybe require a privacy screening between the units, landscapes and trees or something. I think that also helps improve the quality of the lake for the residents. And then I looked at the maximum coverage shall be 50%. I'm almost thinking bring that down to 40. I think if we're lowering in units, I think 40 would be more than sufficient and still offer coverage for a community center or something like that, but protect the open feeling of a development like that.
What was the number you threw at? I'm sorry.
40% for you, 10% off, that makes 60% would have to be open. That's it for now.
Anyone else?
Sure. I think one of the things that we were a little surprised in while we saw the number of units that were going to be put into that property. I thought it I thought it was a thousand square feet of living area. Didn't take in consideration that garage they were going to put out, which made it even more of a tight fitting. You know. So I don't know if we should include the square footage to include the garage somehow.
It should be given a consideration.
It made it very tight and we kind of got backed into that.
Yeah.
Perhaps we could make a modification to say the footprint case square footage or the footprint or the or building square footage as opposed to dwelling unit square footage or something like that. Of course, we want to meet the requirements that are called for for whether the for units as well and the codes. So we'll look at that to make sure we don't conflict with another regulation.
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with Commissioner Robyn with the the distance between the homes that 10 feet is very narrow, especially if you had a fence or green in between. I would like to see that opportunity to be wide enough to possibly put maybe the builder to have windows that they can cover with fencing or green or something for the quality, the residence of the home. When you get very close, you're just tapping windows on the front and back of the home that might just provide a little more sunlight coming in.
All right. My last comment would basically be that I think that when we look at this overall text amendment, we should always consider the neighborhood that is adjacent to it. And what the the zone is for that neighborhood as well. Because you almost want it to be fluid and something that's going to look at odds with the existing neighborhood. Okay. And I know we are in the special perm hours. We're in the public hearing part of this. So was there anyone who wants to address the commission regarding this application? Now would be the time to share some thoughts. Okay, here and now. Is there anyone online? Anyone in Zoom land? Okay, hearing none. All right.
So I'll make the motion to continue then.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robin has the motion. Ms. Dorsey has a second for the discussion. All those in favor? Was opposed, so move. Next up, special permit site plan application of developer J R Schlesser, Connecticut, self-storage or self-storage at 2,200 Burlington Pike. This apparently, I believe, has been tabled by the request of the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we're not going to just, we're not going to do anything. So I need a motion to continue this or
Reschedule it to the next hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Terrific. I just want to make sure that we don't start the meeting. Okay, on to old business.
Can we make a a comment just in case anyone is here? We did get communication with, I know the commission may or may not have a concern with regard to one of the pending applications under old business, which is by 5554 Burlington Pike.
Yes.
And I don't know if anyone is present interested in that. But I understood or that the commission may decide they don't want to discuss that this evening and the applicant has indicated they were fine with that. And I don't believe they have anyone present. But if you don't have an intention to discuss that tonight, it would be helpful to anyone who might be online for that application to know that upfront instead of waiting around.
Okay.
And they did agree with that. So and you do have 65 days to decide it, but given you were given new information last week, I understand. And I, yeah. I thought you might be looking towards getting that pulled together. And I'm sorry, I didn't think of it earlier in the meeting.
All right. So for those out in Zoom land or here that may not have heard the item B under public hearings, the applications for 550 to 554 Burlington Pike, associates LLC. That is going to be continued. That's going to be moved over to in March.
You should be making a motion on that.
Yes. All right, we'll do that.
Make a motion to continue to the next meeting, which is
That's what, February 2nd? Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Zigma. Do you have a second? Second by Ms. Dorsey, further discussion. All those in favor? Those opposed, so move. Okay. So item B is put to bed. Let's go back to pick up item A, site plan application H2O Farms, Burling LLC for the construction of two greenhouses at 2107 Chamberlain Highway. We did close this last week, so now we're into the deliberation part of this. And I believe we actually.
So we did, we did receive and and just maybe go to the microphone, Attorney Monchine. Attorney Monchine did submit a request to reopen a public hearing for a limited purpose. And I I know this is a little bit unusual, but I'm gonna I'm gonna let I'm gonna let him just describe to you what he would like the commission to. The commission to begin because I do think it is the commission's decision. I want to make some comments, but go ahead.
Thank you, Brad Monchine for. H two O Farm, at the hearing last week, there was discussion about. A notice of violation that was issued by the Department of Agriculture. Mr. Tovia was here and testified that. That they had, he had thought they had withdrawn or dismissed. The.
Do we need to reopen the public hearing first before we start taking testimony?
No, he's just, he's just describing what the purpose is. Very limited, his comments are very limited, he's just telling you what it is, and I'm going to make a comment. And give you some direction, so just, just let him just describe it, it's, it's.
So, so Mr. Tovia described the fact that he thought that the. The notice was dismissed or withdrawn because of further test results that came back. After the notice of violation was was issued. And we just wanted to complete the record by submitting.
I think that that's, you know, that's.
That's all, that's all of us.
So, so. We had, we had a brief discussion before the meeting started. So oftentimes, when this issue arises, it is in the same meeting. Where you've closed the public hearing and then deliberations get underway and everybody's still in the room. And something, I had it happen recently, something comes up. Where somebody has a question and looks at staff and says, gee, you know, I remember we discussed such and such and I'm not quite sure what they said. And then staff or council will give the recommendation, why don't you reopen? The public hearing applicant, you know, consultants, council still in the room, they can answer your question, that's fine to do that, blah, blah. When you have sort of a separation of time, I always like to see if you're going to reopen that at least publish on an agenda. But because of the proximity of your meetings. You just, you know, you just had the closing of the public hearing last Thursday. And, you know, you're supposed to be delivering tonight on this. Because again, it's only the site plan approval that's, you know, outstanding here, so you're dealing with a limited amount of time. And they had to consent even to get you to tonight for the deliberation, so. You know, I, I think it's because, you know, there's a very narrow. Basis for why they want to reopen, you know, I, I think it's fine if you're inclined. To reopen it for that limited purpose, I think it's fine to do that. So that's my advice to you, it's, it's totally your decision. But I just wanted to make you aware, you know, we did get the request. And it's up to you whether or not you want to reopen again, justify that limited information.
Jennifer, let me ask a question. If we were to decide to reopen it, does that mean we have to repost this, legal notices and?
No, no, because, because again, it's being offered for a limited purpose. And, and it's not to the larger issues in the application. Where, you know, they're looking to bring it, they're looking to address something that was raised. You know, the last night of that hearing and just, you know, a supporting document to support the statements that were made. By the applicant's representative. I don't, you know, I, I can't. One of the things that I balanced in my mind when I saw the request, well. You know, what would really be the comments that would be even made about it, it's simply that the. The purpose of it is, as he's indicated, just to show you factually that, yeah, the testing did occur. It would, the, the notice of violation should clear it out. That's not something that anybody can really offer any comment on. Because that's, that's what occurred factually, you know. So it's just, it's just, you know, again, offering documentary proof to support the representation that was made in the meeting. So it's very.
Very narrow. It's very focused, so would it then be? It would be something that if we elected to. That we could reopen the public hearing tonight? And close the public hearing tonight and go forward with our deliberation?
Yes.
Okay.
I just have a comment on that.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Dorsey.
The point of asking the question or presenting the notice of violation at the last meeting was. Specifically to. Point out some inconsistencies in the testimony that we heard. The fact that a notice of violation was issued. Really has nothing to do with any of our deliberation. The reason the notice of violation was issued is not something that's within the jurisdiction of this board. It was simply to bring forward inconsistencies in testimony. I asked Attorney Monchine at an earlier meeting directly if a notice of violation had ever been issued. And the answer was no. And then in other testimony, the answer was no, and then in writing. The representation was that there had been no compliance issues. So it was only the intent to bring it forward that there were inconsistencies with respect to what was presented to us. And not that we have any set or jurisdiction over the fact. That that entity deals with. So with that, I would move to not reopen the hearing.
I agree with the. This was, this was a. Clarification and. It's also shows for the client, I mean, for us, that, that if there is. Any violation of any, and like that DB violations, whatever, there is a process. That, that works and we found out it doesn't work. And that's more of a plus than a negative. Because there is that regular regulatory body to. Keep it proper, so, you know, I don't think, I agree with you that, I don't think it's a decision of ours.
All right, so we have a motion and we, I believe, did you second it? No, you just talked.
No, I disagreed with Diane.
All right, so Nikki seconded, do we have further discussion? I have a question and I'm not sure if that is sort of the.
So before we call for the vote.
So, yeah, before I call for the vote, just because we're in discussion on this motion. So, um, I just want to make sure that all parties involved. To treat them equally and fairly. Have the option to address. The commission and that we're giving them that opportunity. So I, I just want to make sure that this motion. Well, actually, Diane, you actually answered the question. I, never mind, never mind. I was, like I said, I'm trying to think through the process and what, and to do what's best for everyone involved.
Yeah, and that's of course what was foremost of my mind when I saw the request.
Yeah, exactly.
Pretty much I understand.
Yes, it's very strange. Okay, so we have a motion. And the motion is to continue into deliberations and not to reopen the public hearing. We have a second on it. So do we have further discussion on it, folks? So all those in favor of the motion? Those opposed, so we're going into deliberation.
Thank you.
Well, we'll take it. All right, so now we're into, we're back into deliberation, so. Any thoughts? Well, I have some, but I don't know if I want to start with mine.
I make a slight recap, so, and that's only because I'm also catching up, but we. I understand that at last week's hearing and reviewing the record that. Distributed was a set of conditions that. Mister, that Attorney Monchine had put together. As proposed conditions should you determine to move forward. And we also have a. I also received an email this week. With. Incorporating six modifications to that that were as discussed. It's in an email dated January seventeenth, twenty three, twenty twenty three. And those were additional concerns raised and were therefore then noted as to be added to those conditions.
Okay.
If that's where you're headed, so I'm kind of recapping for me as, as the one that would be drafting any, any letter in.
What's the, what's the date that Attorney?
So the, the, the original correspondence was January tenth and you, we, we received it on the eleventh and it was in your package of last week. It looked like this. It was a six, a five page letter that. That on page four starts with the commit, it's highlighted as our committed commitment to the town and community and its numbers one through seventeen. And then.
Just trying to.
I had a lot to catch up on as well and I'm only partially caught up on these and that's why I'm bringing it to your attention that it was there. But then we have, and I might read them to you to make sure that they're consistent and I'm just, again, the, this is testimony from last week. Although I did tweak it for wording and clarity. Change the condition about trucks showing up early and parking at exits to parking offsite at state permitted areas. So that was something that I understand Commissioner Zigma raised with regard to where. Trucks wait if the facility is not.
Would be helpful, because I've got all kinds of notes.
I could hand this to you.
I just, I want to compare it to the January tenth letter, so are your comments in the order that that letter was?
Well, they're from the email he sent me, so I'm thinking they might be, but again, I only reviewed them this afternoon when I came back to work. I'm at a little bit of a loss on it. Thank you. And, and I'll try to find out which numbers they go with as I go through, when, when you guys start talking amongst yourselves. Make the head house look like the red part of the rendition for the entire head house. So consistent architectural frontage. Make trucks make a left turn only leaving the facility and in parentheses back towards I six ninety one. Work with the town to facilitate school tours. Will test the well four times per year and provide results to the town's water department. And will avoid any mechanical units on the east side of the property.
I think I should say water department, health department.
And.
Results. One other thing was the split rail fence was to be on the property line of Apple Lane. All the way down to, to the back property line. Somewhere to the, get the southern side.
And again, I don't want to preclude any discussion or whatever way the commission is. With their deliberation and, and decision, I just want to make sure that. Any decision incorporates everything it needs.
All right, so we're going to deliberate. You want, any volunteers to go first on this project?
Oh, Tim.
Yeah. During the whole process here, I've got a lot of concessions of the applicant. On this one list that just, we're discussing now and also during the, the time. And any concessions, staff comments, any department comments. Should be. On filed with the map on the map. I found too many times that applicants have said they would do this or do that. And years down the road, we find out that wasn't done. So I think it's a pretty good idea. They stated that some towns are requiring it right now and I think it's a good idea to, any of our. Applications that any decision made by, by the applicant should be written and filed with the map. To clarify some of now.
Is that it?
Yeah. So far.
All right, anyone else?
I just want to be specific with the water being tested, where the water is, I assume that's the well on the, on the property. The well water, okay, want to specific on that. And then, early, early in our discussion, we talked about, is it the semis that do pickup engine braking? Or braking, is that a concern? As it coming down the road to get into the plant. Do we have any need to add anything about that the trucks don't use?
They're bracing.
Yeah.
It just was stated early, maybe it's not important. No, I think it's important.
Yeah. I could see asking the applicant to work with our department to get some signage purposes, no engine brakes at the top of that.
All right, Diane, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll just. I've got lots of thoughts to share, but I'll maybe start off with. Some of what I've considered because I've found this to be a particularly difficult application. To consider. And so when the text amendment was brought to us. I voted in opposition to the text amendment. Because I felt at the time that it did not comply with the plan of conservation and development. I and those that voted with me were outnumbered and the text amendment was adopted. So it puts us in a position of. Considering now an application that complies with the zoning. And so it leaves us to look at the plan of conservation and development. I find in reviewing the plan of conservation and development that. The specific points that relate to that specific area are not. Stated affirmatively. The guidance is just that, it's guidance, it says that, that it's a policy, but then. There's language within the policy that is should or may instead of must and shall. And so I find the plan of conservation and development to be a little bit weak in that regard. This particular property had been for sale for several years. The way that the area is zoned is intentional to limit the amount of development. But I look at it like if the town didn't want that area to be developed, it should have been purchased by the town. Because the people that own the land should be able to use the land. There's a precedent set already by property south. Of this particular parcel with a significant number of greenhouses. Similar growing practices. Just smaller scale and I think it's the scale, it's obviously the scale. Of what's being proposed that has everybody so concerned. And I. And I I go back and forth between agreeing that it's industrial and agricultural. Um, because of the scale. The reality is though that. From an environmental perspective. Any concern that people have, the damage has already been done by the previous history. It used to be a peach orchard. I was a kid thinning peaches in that peach orchard. Forty years ago. And the pesticides and the products that were used in that peach orchard, I'm sure are still there. So I agree with the testimony that the. Likelihood of contamination from this use is. Likely not as. Much of a risk as what's perceived. Um, I feel that some of the testimony that was offered was a little bit misleading here and there. Um, in the end, uh, there's specific information that we need to consider. Um, a lot of the testimony that was offered has nothing to do with the purview of what this board. Has to consider. So those are my thoughts to start conversation.
Oh, my only one thought. Is that I understand that the land was previously used before and that there's they had pesticides. My concern is that we're potentially adding to it. But not only that, it's a huge scale of the project. It feels industrial to me. I it doesn't sit well with me. It. I I don't, it's the plan of conservation calls to protect the businesses. And to sort of. I don't know, take take care of the land down there. I'm not certain that this is in line with that.
Um, I do have something that I have to write down, but I'm gonna get my thoughts together. Um, there's a couple of concerns that I have with this application. Uh, one of them that concerns me the most is that H two O seems to dismiss the possibility of any type of catastrophic event. Or spillage. This has been brought up multiple times in our public hearings. Um, and they seem to say that it's never going to happen, but I never seen that. Because it can't. My concern is with the aquifers and the water courses in the area. If the applicant is environmentally response, the applicant's environmentally environmentally responsible. To ensure that they do no harm to the smaller aquifer serving the wells and the adjacent landowners. It was noted in this young woman from Yukon. That on rare occasions, H two O will need to control, do a controlled partial replacement on the solution in their system. And that they will contract a licensed environmental contractor to discard it safely. Which indicates to me that there are some there are toxins in this, in the solution that could. So what happens, and we've asked this too, what happens in the situation is not controlled. What happened, if there is that that comes out of this and a significant error that occurs. Are empty thousands of gallons of the solution into the ground. It seems that the bulk of the risk is on the town and the residents. Seems to be no liability.
Brian, do you want to add anything?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we go back quite a way with this one over the last year, I mean, going back to the public hearings. And we did have public show up. We had a lot of concerns, but we really had no negative testimony. Which really heavily affected my decision. If anything, a lot of people were uncertain. We had some positive testimony. Um, and to think over multiple meetings where I know for one, I drilled the applicant with a lot of questions. Looking back, I will not negatively affect the applicant was actually one of my conditions that I asked for. However, not many years. And text amendments stands as it was written. I mean, there was a lot of time for amendments to it. Or like we saw earlier today to have it abolished. And so what our purview is is looking at the site plan as it exists. Um, I understand your concern of failure of the water tables. But as I see it, yes, even if there was a catastrophic event, I think they did a good job of showing that. It wouldn't have a catastrophic impact because of the. Parts per million of the fertilizer that is in the solution that they use to grow is so minimal. That it wouldn't have that negative impact. But that's also why we're asking for four times a year that the wild water be tested and. Maybe one of the conditions is that we have an insurance certificate on file for liability. If that's concerned with the town, I think that would be a good one. Um, some of my other thoughts is that when we look at the left turn only, I don't agree with that. I think that especially if it's only two to three trucks a day, I think that could have more of a negative impact on on people by forcing the traffic to go one way. It is a highway. I mean, there is considerable traffic, there truck traffic. I don't think saying right or left is really going to have that big of a difference. If anything, they're going to have to be rearing up their engines more to make it up that hill. They take a left only. Those are just some of my thoughts for now.
I mean, I just, yeah, sure.
One of the concerns, if they do go take a right, most likely they will cut through Orchard Road or not. Okay, and those are our town roads. School buses go on, it's going to be during the time the school buses are going to be going up and down there. And and to be honest with you, if they were going to go straight out down to. Priorlies down there to seventy-two, that would be one thing, but I'll guarantee you they'll cut through the side streets. But those are the closest streets to get down to fans club or stop and shop or then they're going through the center now.
I I agree with that. I've driven on the road. It's more than just the school buses. There's vans there that take a lot of the special needs kids to from classes. At school, I mean, home in school. People drive down north very, very fast. The other issue I have is that there's been a lot of inconsistencies with the testimonies, a lot of vagary. It's concerning to me what was brought up about the violation, not getting into the violation. But the fact of the false testimony and between everything. And so I'm not confident that there's going to be, if something were to happen. Or with any other instance with this application, that we're going to get a forthright and truthful response. I I'm perceiving all kinds of different things being half true. Possibly not not fully explained or not explained correctly. Possible miscommunications. It's concerning to know.
And that was even with, um, uh, the director of development services was before us last meeting testified that. When the applicant first came to economic development. That they were led to believe the project was one way and then it went on to be something else. So after yielding their support and blessing, they they really kind of got chipped or at least I had a perception that that's what it was about. But you know, as as far as, um, uh, because I've given it all a chance because I didn't want to. You know, the I I agree with Diane in the sense that the plan of conservation development does not have strong words like shall and must or whatever. But this is our guideline and this is the plan of conservation development. It's basically been pretty much researched and testified to and it's a guide for the citizens of the town. And I think it should be written for citizens as opposed to legalese, no offense to HRs in the office in the area. Okay, um, that being said, and I maybe I'm going to romanticize about this a little bit perhaps. But for me, agricultural land is exactly that agricultural land. It's for working in for the dirt. It's for turning over that manure. It's for planting the seeds and getting your hands dirty. Now, whether you do it on a large commercial scale. Or if you do it just as a victory garden in your own backyard, because you want your kid to learn how tomatoes grow and cucumbers grow. Whatever your reason is, it's the act of gardening, it's the act of taking heart and being able to. To enjoy the fruits of your labor, watching stuff grow. And I think that's important. I think that's something that's getting lost in our society. Is the ability to to go out and 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 plant something and watch it grow. I mean, I I I think it's really important, but. The farmer overall, and not only in this town, but in the state and the country is a failing group. They work very, very hard at all different levels, all different kind of farms. And it seems that their their reward, monetary reward is just enough to keep them going. It's just enough to get to the next season and maybe give you a little extra. And that I understand and that's a real, that's a real true spirit for the real farmers. Now, I look at this proposal and I think after listening to the testimony, how it works. How hydroponic works, you know, floating around little plants in the water all have kumaya. And I I think that's really interesting and that might be the farm of the future. But even the applicant stated it himself that you do not. You do not need agricultural land for hydroponic farm. All it needs is sunshine and a flat area. And once you put that greenhouse up, you can set your course for your business. It doesn't require agricultural land. God's not making any more agricultural land for us. We have to protect what we have. Contaminants or peach gardens or or peach trees or whatever has happened. It's just really important that we don't lose sight of what we have. That's special and unique and become like everybody else. On the other hand, the ability for the business to continue in hydroponic farming, I think is great. I mean, off the top of my head, I say, I think it's a wonderful idea. I just don't think that it's the right place for this idea. One parcel of land that comes to 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 mind is we have over a ten acre parcel. That's on the Deming Road in the Berlin Turnpike, uh, over by Home Depot. There's an old industry building there. That's pretty darn flat. I mean, you could put up something there if you wanted to. That's the beauty of hydroponic farming. It can go anywhere. It doesn't have to be on hydroponic, uh, on agricultural land. So, I mean, that's what I'm wrestling with. And then the size of the buildings is something else too. I mean, uh, we had heard testimony that a greenhouse should be approximately fifteen feet in height. Now we're looking at twenty-six feet. We're looking at something that encompasses five acres. That's huge. And even when working with the applicant, or at least during our discussions or back and forth. It was suggested, I suggested that perhaps we could lower the roofline down. Maybe we can make not two super huge buildings. Maybe we can make like a lot of little buildings. That would kind of just bring it all down and make it work with the area that it's in. With the with the countryside, with the neighbors and what you have going. So that's that's what I'm wrestling with is that this might be a great idea. I just don't think it's a good idea for for this piece of property. And I I wish it would consider someplace else, but now Tim.
I gotta go back to a couple of things. It's been farming land forever. Other other crops. And I know about old farmers, okay? I worked in horse farms out there with the farmers when I was young. Bill and hay, uh, stuff an old trucks with hay, but. And I know what the old farmers did when they had something to dispose of, they dug a big hole. And they put the barrels and everything else in that big hole. Environmentals were not the thing of the fertilizers at that time that they were using. We find out that that's real bad, okay? We bought a town purchased properties, Chikowski property and I've got the other one Bradley property. That was apple orchards. And the first thing I told the town was to get the environmental done on it. Cause I knew there was those holes dug in that property. The town didn't do that. And now it became.
Wait a minute, are you talking about?
Kristopics property, Bicep, London Bicep to the new park now.
Okay, that's over there. Okay, I thought you were talking about this problem.
No, on this pro, on this property, there's been others, uh, uses greenhouses, everything over the years. The environmental of this project. Uh, with testimony from Yukon and everything in the testimony we got throughout a year. Isn't surely not as great as as the farming. That was out there and farming of today also. But we wanted to stir our farming area and that's why we put the zone that out there in place. The concern that. And I explained that to the the people why that zoning was put out there. To protect that part of the land, which was the hundred hundred lion zone. Now, you see that there is a potential. Of office development out there. Marion wants to hook up their water with the city of Berlin, uh, town Berlin and the city in Britain. They all want to hook up their lines together for they all have nice and nice lines, nice lot of water. Okay, uh, so that potential now comes into play. We didn't since nineteen eighty-six, uh, we haven't had that potential out there. But this operation, after a lot of testimony, is farming. It is the twenty-three future farming of the world. And I I see it as a good thing out there using the land as farming. And I think our zoning out there should be changed and and promote the farming. Whichever type of farming it is. And the aquifer down below. Uh, I don't see this one hurting the aquifer. Not what the potential of what was out there. And the building, yes, it's it's a huge building. And I could see the concerns of the people out there, the huge building. But with the testimony of not a lot of trucking. Three trucks a day at the most, whatever, maybe it grew to five. And the time uses and the, you know, what they have considered out there. The design of the building may look like a barn, even though it's surely not a big, it's a awful big barn. even though it's surely not a big, it's awful big barn that was a barn. But I think everything has been discussed over and over. And I think we've got the product that the zoning allows and zoning that they got the I's crossed T's. Which I feel this application has done. That we can't really say no to stuff that really put his board or zone. If it complies to all our regulations. You know, we can, there are discussions, ask them for other things and other items in which we did. And they came up with a whole list of concessions. The applicant has addressed almost every topic that was brought up by the public and us. I think there's a couple of items that is not. The bottom line of conservation and development was to make sure that it stays agriculture and is agriculture. That's all I can say.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Nikki.
I respectfully, we'd like to differ on a couple of points. And I'm just going to mention a couple of things.
That's what you're up here for.
Um, wind turbines, electric cars, hydroponic farming. The wind turbines, in theory, seem like a wonderful idea. What are they doing with the turbines, with the propellers? When they're done, they're burying them in the dirt. Electric cars, wonderful. Everybody's got to have a hookup for an electric car. What happens when you blow your engine? That's easily, and I'm low balling it, 3K, 3K. Just because the hydroponic farming, great, now I feel it's in its early stages, needs perfecting. I'm concerned about the no liability. I'm concerned about the potential for spillage. I'm, I have concerns for, I understand we keep discussing it back and forth, aquifers. I've got concerns for the distance, the sheer height of it, the magnitude of it, the everything, everything. It's a very concerning project. And Madam Chair, I asked the same question that you do. Why that area when the applicant stated themselves that it could potentially go just about anywhere on a flat surface? You know, just because it crosses all the Ts and dots all the Is doesn't mean it's a good fit for the community, for the land, for the landscape. That's, that's my thoughts.
All right, anyone, oh yeah, Joan.
I appreciate all the conversation we're having. I think this is all very, very good. I have a few points, I'm kind of coming off of conversations we've had. And as far as location goes, it's farming. They're producing lettuce. It's a new process, hydroponics. I wish I could grow something for your, for seasons and be that productive. What's nice about hydroponics being new and a new process, they've had the experience of their other location. Probably learned a few things now when you plant. I feel comfortable in the safety measures they have in place with their mechanics watching water level or fertilization level. It seems like a safe process to minimize our concerns with the location at that, that point or loss of water, if they lose water in the field, I think that they would have an early detection on that. So I'm very comfortable in the safety measures they have. And I do understand the comment they made earlier too, as far as location goes, is that if you have to find a place to produce your product, and then if you're shipping out to so many destinations, you want to find a central point. You need to have water like they have from Meriden. You need to have a location or the space by acres to, to produce the product and then to ship it to the different locations from grocery stores to whatever locations are shipping to. I think the concern is size, the difference of farming. It is a new way, and they can be highly productive in the amount of plants they produce just because it's a new process. But it, it makes sense to me.
Yes, sure, go ahead, Nikki.
I know that right now they're saying they're growing lettuce. What if that morphs and changes? And then there's no control over anything else that is potentially grown?
Well, I do believe they did say lettuce and herbs. And I think last time, I remember questioning them on what to define herbs. What exactly is an herb? And we came out with basil, parsley, rosemary, thyme, sage. And I believe that that was the list of the five that were given to me. All right, I had thought in my mind perhaps oregano, but I think oregano requires a bee. You cross over, when you do tomatoes, cucumbers, peppers, any farmer will tell you, you better have some bees around because otherwise you're not going to handle food. So I think that's why they chose the herbs that they did is because they don't need bee activity. But just to go back, just one more.
No herbs of the seventies?
I don't know. No, no, that's not what we're talking about.
I may interject, while talking about other crops, one of the other things I asked more during the public hearing out of fear of losing the night skies in South Covington was the lack of use of artificial light. So for a lot of these other crops that you would grow in greenhouses, you need artificial light. So it's very limiting as to what can be grown in these greenhouses.
If you, if you want to talk about losing the night sky, you lose the day sky too, just for the sheer magnitude of the building. Not to be smart or quick or anything, that's just what kind of poppin' out.
And in winter, we're always cloudy, so.
I just addressed the height of the buildings. They, they'd come 35 feet, I think originally.
Well, originally it was 40, then they came back at 30.
Forty and then they came down, and they're at 28 now, okay?
I heard 26.
Yeah, you got 26.
We went back and forth.
It's close to 28, 27. Colonial houses, 28. What a, what a, what a high pitch roof. 20 feet of story, 10 foot of story.
But as long, as long.
Yeah, but how many houses, how many houses can you put on? How much 20 acres you go put approximately?
I don't know why you're, I don't know why we're going down that.
No, no, but there's no reason. I'm just saying that, that, that if you put houses on the property, the height will be about the same on the houses, but the impact on well systems and sewer systems will be a lot higher.
Have to bring in.
Be a lot higher, okay? Well, they go put, they go put wells in and they go put septic tanks in, right? And, and, and there's going to be more stuff, wells and septic tanks in this place with one well, one septic tank.
All right, I understand what you're saying, and I think it's, it's a important part. But I guess I'm feeling almost like a little bit threatened in the sense that if we don't do this, this will happen. And I just want to make sure that the commission is clear on this. That's not how we do that, no, but I want to make sure that the new people on the commission understand that we're, we're looking at this site plan application. And you should never feel, God, I hope, you never feel that you're pressured or threatened. If you don't do this, something else bad will happen. You need to judge this application on its own merits. Is this what's best? Can you wake up tomorrow morning and know that you've made the right decision? And this is a difficult thing about what we do because we, we try really hard, just do the best we can. We're all volunteers, but, so I just, I just want to make sure, Tim. Okay, and I wasn't trying to charge you or anything, it's just, I was with the new people involved. I just don't want them to feel.
I understand you, I understand what you're saying. It's just, you know, when I look at stuff, you know, what's the potential use of any land? Okay, it doesn't matter out there where it is. What a developer, what, 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 what best use of that land to a developer's mind? And they go put the, many of his houses into a piece of property or many of his office buildings into a piece of property. You know, whatever, when the developer goes out there, they go do it to the biggest part they can.
I just, I just a reminder to the public that's in the room. The commission is in their deliberation session, and you're allowed to be in the room, but you're not allowed to talk. Okay, so if the talking doesn't stop, I'm going to ask people to leave.
Okay.
Go ahead, please continue.
All right, last one, turn it off.
No, sure.
Yeah.
I have a train call.
Okay, good.
My thought is, I agree, we have to take, take the applications as they come. And even though some people feel the greenhouse might be a proper fit of the land, there's not saying that something else won't come along that might be a better fit, that's more suitable. I'm not convinced that this is the correct project based on everything that I researched, based on testimonies, both sides, applicants and public, based on information that we were given, the things that I've researched, taking everything into consideration. I'm not confident that it's a proper fit for where they're proposing the location of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogan?
Yeah, so I feel like we're discussing this as it is the text amendment and not the site plan of which, which we are addressing. I agree, I think that had we had the testimony that we got for this public hearing, which we brought to the public so that they could be, they could have their chance to speak their concerns and make the project better. This is a simple site plan. So, yes, I believe that if we had had this discussion and had the testimony that we got, we'd probably be looking at a different regulation if sitting here at all. But I think we do need to keep the purview of what this commission has and keep it focused on the site plan that we're looking at.
It is concerning to me though that, I apologize, it is concerning to me though that, like you had mentioned, Madam Chair, that when they initially went to propose the change for the text amendment, and they got the blessing from that commission, it didn't turn out to be what they were led to believe it was going to be. That still is concerning to me. And it lends itself to the overall transparency of answers that we have gotten or questions that may or may not have been answered. Going back to that, to the, the asking about the violation, that's a big.
The text amendment was this commission. Not any other commission, no one else has a land use body. We're the only one that has the land use bodies, the text amendment came here. It was, people did speak on it in public at that time. People from Chamber Highway did come out at that time. They didn't have a lot of concerns lighting and everything else that I can remember. And was thoroughly discussed, a text amendment with text amendment items.
I'm just, I'm meaning when they went before the, the other.
Economic development is not, it's not a land use body. They should not be recommending land use items. But that's another topic for another time. But then it comes from the text amendment to the applicant. Okay, and the applicant must abide or go by whatever text amendment says. And we always, through this commission, which is very, very thorough to developers, and sometimes they don't get a little mad at us at the end. Because we like our flowers and we like our design and stuff like that. But again, it comes down, everything that we approved as a text amendment has to be filed. And I think this applicant has done that. And we could ask, at this time, we could ask for more things to be done and approve it with those stipulations if we wanted to. So with that said, and I see the commission here, why I feel the commission here is passion, things over and over, same thing we did when the public hearing, we heard everything about five times. You know, I would make a motion to approve with all, all conditions that the applicant has agreed to in all conditions of the staff, all the staff departments and the building commission, the building department, the fire department, the police department, everything, all their conditions to be addressed and placed on the maps. And the other conditions that the commission here may want to apply to as my.
All right, well, we have a motion by Mr. Ziegler. A second for discussion, okay? Seconded by Mr. Oshie for discussion, okay? For the discussion, can we state very clearly exactly what the conditions are? I can help. Taking from the January 10th letter of Attorney Moonshine. So, so item one, with respect to the truck pickups and deliveries being limited from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That needs to be clarified to be Monday through Friday with no weekends.
And that's the one I noted earlier that any trucks showing up during off hours are to park off-site at state permitted areas.
Yes. Want to add in the left-hand turn only there?
We discussed left turn only, I don't know that we have a consensus on the left turn.
No, we're just in discussion.
I wouldn't be inclined to do left-hand open.
I would agree, no restrictions on right or left turn. I think there should be.
I think there should be.
I think there should be.
Well, no. Well, yeah, 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 I'm trying to talk.
I'm sorry.
For me, I'd say right or left works, but maybe say the trucks have to stay to state roads so they're not going down our local back roads.
Well, that's right.
With that said, I, I experienced it in East Berlin all the time, out of Commerce Street. Berlin Street, right to Middle Street is the direct route to Route 9 or Berlin Turnpike or 91. But it all comes down Main Street, you know? You know, so, so unless there's signs up, no commercial vehicles, no commercial vehicles in every street going east, they're going to take those streets. That's my concern. I drive a commercial bus, I know I would, I, I would take the northern border anytime I have.
Okay.
Um, item two, uh the posting on no idling signs at the loading dock. Um, and rigidly enforced state idling regulations is fine, but I'd like to also add.
You do have a local ordinance, I just want to point out before you.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Doing something new every day.
I'd also like to add, um, any stationary trailers uh with refrigeration units will be prohibited. And I think that would also include it. Outdoor coolers. I'm fine with the independent water testing, I guess I'm not really sure what purpose that serves because it's gonna be limited in its scope. But that's fine. Installation of water sensors under the growing tubs. I don't have any comment there other than um to consider or maybe help staff explore. The possibility of secondary containment. Under number five, there will be no direct discharge to the environment. Um, and then if growing beds need to be drained for repair purposes, that the licensed, the LEP or contractor will dispose of the irrigation water. Um, the screening along the southern border and rear of the property as recommended by the commission and staff. There was discussion about working with staff and neighbors on um what exactly that would be. Condition should be that all screening should be installed as part of phase one. Relocation of the trash dumpster to a location that will not have an impact on neighbors. Uh, we never had a description of that, but um to conform with customary dumpster screening. The additional farm fencing of around the corner and along Apple Lane. Also help delineate the property line. There was mention of signage, but I don't recall what the signage was gonna be, and I think that's a police commission or traffic permission.
Apple Lane is a private road, it's not, it's not under the town's purview. If I understood the.
So the intent was to have the.
And again, I was at that hearing, but I think it was to delineate from the residential properties. And children playing, et cetera, so that if their structure equipment was along those, was utilizing their paths. That they would be aware that kids might be on that private driveway road.
Nine is fine as it is regarding dust control measures. There in. That was number two. Number ten mentions limiting hours of construction to minimize community inconvenience, but there was no timeframe discussed. Um, I don't know what the commission's pleasure is on that, but it should be stipulated.
I'll note that we also have a construction noise ordinance.
We do have ordinance.
Yeah, there's an ordinance, I used to know it off the top of my head.
Item eleven, um setting up a segregated fertilizer mixing room in the headhouse with concrete floor. In a thick plastic liner in the steel growing beds. I'm not sure if I understand that that's um a secondary containment, but perhaps staff work with. The applicant. On possible secondary containment. Twelve, the energy efficiency curtains um will be used to shield pathway lighting. In early morning and all evening hours or after dark. Um, exterior lighting will be downward facing. So as not to intrude on abutting properties. Fourteen is. Fine. Uh, fifteen and sixteen are fun.
Uh seventeen, I just typically recommend that that be approved. If if they want to be outside storage. The language of, you know, we will have minimal, well, what does that mean to them? I I don't, you know, I typically recommend, as I have previously to you, I mean, outside storage, they're gonna allow it. Unless it, you know, it's something that's been discussed in terms of what type of storage it is. I I just, that language is problematic, I think. Because it's minimal to to the commission versus what's minimal to the applicant.
Or um outside storage shall be maintained in an orderly manner or. It's, you should be able to store things, but you don't want it to be unsightly. And um I think agricultural properties in general uh have a little bit of a benefit. Um, typically there, which. I don't know if you guys have a preference for verbiage here, I want to say no chemicals. The chemical storage is prescribed by the product labels. Sure, it doesn't light up in this storage. It depends what the storage is.
For the outside storage, maybe handle in the same way that we handle our dumpsters, not as orderly, but it should be reviewed and if that means necessarily screened.
And then we did have discussions about rooftop mechanicals and um the possibility of. Noise from fans or air conditioning units. Affecting other properties, so. Be the placement of rooftop mechanicals shall be screened and. Mechanicals um will not or cannot affect abutting neighboring properties.
Can I get clarification on that?
So at the the concern is to the easternmost portion, particularly of the greenhouse. Uh, or of the structure, that um there's a possibility of. Air conditioning units or fans. That could be rattling or buzzing away and affecting abutting neighbors.
So in that additional, uh I just realized in that additional comment. I missed that it was related to number seventeen was um from the last hearing. We will avoid any mechanical units on the east side of the property, back of property. So when then we'll modify that further.
And the outside uh chemicals should be shielded, just like we do.
As required by the regs.
Um, and then you mentioned Maureen earlier with respect to the school tours. That uh that would be, I I think the regulations might address some of that as special permit activity.
I'm sorry.
For school tours.
But this is an opportunity, so. So in the the summary from the last meeting that they provided to me, they stated we will work with the town to facilitate school tours.
This facility, I'm sure, let's go attract like UConn culture, come down, look at it. I'm sure they'll want their classes to come down there and stuff, so.
That's what we were told because of liability.
Then they're gonna have to buy a lot of ability for uh policy to.
Is there a way to ensure that they're going to do that?
So the testimony wasn't for due to COVID.
But I also been calling him saying that he stopped it because of liability.
Get my notes, you can send it back to me. Though I put checkmarks next to the ones that you addressed. And then noted other things I heard said or had noted from previous meetings.
So I need to save these then.
Yeah, and then, like I said, the checkmarks are the ones I believe are already covered. Or in one of the numbers, if it has an extra number next to it, like seventeen, went with the seventeen for the storage.
Um, so we're talking about the school tours, working with the town to facilitate school tours, yeah, your name.
I think it's a good thing to expose you.
If I can clarify, what I would understand would be within the town's purview is that. The town encourage, the commission can make a decision to um encourage that facilitation and put that as a a note. Should the commission stay silent on the issue, I believe that the. It would be up to the facility itself, just like with any other factory business, you know, whatever, to determine whether or not. They had children, if they had children come to their facility or or schools or, you know, students of any sort come to their facilities. That would be, just like any other business would have that within their their purview to make that determination. On the town, couldn't preclude them from doing it, I don't think.
I do think of this, well, towards it's not really at use that we were considering. How to have some oversight as to when, how many people.
I don't think that would be a problem, like I said, I think it's.
Every school, I do this at schools all the time, every school or manufacturer that has schools coming into. Usually they have tour trail, whatever you call, that's windows off a little bit. Jack get touched product or anything else. The applicants.
I if I understand correctly, Maureen, if we don't even address that or have a vote on it or anything, it would just be between the school and the. Manufacturer.
My interpretation of the zoning regulations would not be, it would be something within the purview of of the zoning officer to. Unless you incorporated it into your decision.
The uh no jake break use, uh so work with the police department for proper signage. You have a note for an insurance certificate to be copied to the town?
Yeah, one of you have said that during the meeting, to make sure the insurance is where, that's the town, that that the coverage is where in place. So to provide it to um the planning and zoning staff for. Make sure it stays.
I'm not sure.
I'm trying to remember what that.
I think the discussion had to do with concern about water contamination.
Do we need to talk about amount? They are an LLC. There's a limited liability.
We're already required by statute to provide clean water if they end up with.
I think the purpose of it would be more that it would be um file for notice purposes. You know, should there be initiation of a claim, you know, that's, you know, and and again, in the event. Based upon the comments you've made. That's, that would be the purpose of imposing that kind of condition, correct? Is you is you want to know that they have something in place, but you also probably desire that. That it would be of record somewhere in the town, so somebody could get that information. Assuming that's why, yeah, then then I think just had it be, you know, of record.
I just see this as a a tracking nightmare for staff. Because they're gonna be renewing their insurance annually, so somebody's gonna need to annually. Make sure that we've collected this.
But the honest is on them to supply and then it becomes a condition of non-compliance, which in most instances with something like that, it takes a fall to get it. I'm sorry. I think they should be providing proof of liability insurance. I mean, what happens if something happens and there's, there's nothing. Do we, do we require proof of liability for other businesses that come to town?
The finding answers and stuff like that will be required. Insurance, liability insurance to cover them. You know, I mean, that's that's a standard thing in the industry when you when you get financing, the finance.
Yeah, well, they're gonna have to cover it, yeah. Just please make sure you're leaning far enough forward that your voices are being picked up, I'm sorry.
All right, that's not a problem. Is there anything else on that list?
Are we decided on that? Is that?
I guess I thought it would be a good thing for. You know, making people more comfortable, I thought at the same time now I can see the dangerous precedent being set.
No, I've lost. I don't think every project will require this, if that's what you're saying, we're we're discussing and not preferring or and the waters go nearby that I'm asking for the insurance. Just for the protection, so the town, not everything falls on the town.
And that's almost a special circumstance, considering the large scale. Of the project and what could potentially go wrong, so no, even though the towns are, most businesses aren't required in this instance, it pretty much, I feel it should be considered.
Okay. So do we want to do a struggle another, or I'm sorry, June?
I, liability insurance covers different areas and. I think having specific, it's going to be difficult for us to identify what liability insurance is going to be required to cover. An aqua party that if it's even a strong risk or not, we don't know that. That's something we should require.
Okay. Tim, what do you think?
Liability insurance, they're just gonna have that, but the. The only thing that I would think is a whole harmless to the town that they they pollute the place, but that's a total problem, right there. A whole harmless so. And the town's not under their insurance or not.
Okay, it's not something that I ever would recommend as a condition of approval.
Okay. What, the insurance or whole town?
The whole harmless.
All right. So Diane, do you have any thoughts on insurance?
I agree with June that there are different types of liability and we don't know to what extent the coverage should be.
Again, you know, there's a lot of supposition, I I'm just gonna interject and kind of. Assist in this way, there's, and I ought to get into a big discussion about it, but you know, the coverage issue. Again, if there's an event and whether it would potentially be covered under a commercial, but you know, your typical. Commercial liability policy. I've had situations where I've been involved in matters and not for the town of Burlington, I'm thinking of one particular town. There's some familiarity with some litigation that's going on. And you just don't know whether or not the carrier will provide coverage based upon the event, you know, what the event is. A lot of times it goes by the particular facts, so. You know, just, I mean, there there are other instances where we do require, you know, just, you know, thinking back in my mind that. At some of the municipal documents I've seen through the years, in terms of requiring. An applicant to provide proof of a of, you know, that they they do hold in good standing. Commercial liability policy, I mean, that's.
Yeah, well, we were just.
That's not that unusual, you know, because there are instances where, you know, we do require that in in certain circumstances. But I think when you start getting into the whole harmless, you're you're going off down a path that's just not appropriate.
You still have to prove gross negligence and all that other stuff.
Yeah, so. Well, I think they're gonna be carrying their own insurance anyway. So I don't know if I need to go, I mean, I.
I assume they're not, you know, they're gonna have a lender.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
I'm sure there's not one right now to pull check.
So that's off the list.
Yeah, that's all.
Well. Yeah, I guess. Okay, and then per staff comments, full architectural plans to be submitted for final. Design review prior to issuance of permits for P and Z staff review with possible. Commission discussion for consistency with presentation.
Yeah, because I miss, I know that that, I understand that was discussed when I wasn't here, so if we're not comfortable. As staff working to, you know, make sure it's consistent with what they represented, then as I do when I'm. On the fence, I bring it back to you guys for discussion, not for a site plan amendment, but for discussion, is this what? What was presented to you, because we, I understand they didn't have the design plans done for presentation.
That would include their outside storage plan, outside storage plan.
So I was, no, that that was my, the intent there was just the architecturals, but I do have. In front of me in 2020, we, the commission revised the zoning regulations with regard to outside storage in industrial zones. And if you want me to read that provision of the regulations to clarify that, either when you're done or now, I can.
Are we pretty much finished with the list, or do we have?
Which way do you want to do it?
Let's hammer this one out right now and we'll.
Okay.
Finish the list after.
Okay, so outside storage, including the storage of merchandise, supplies, machinery. And or other materials directly related to the operation of the principal use may be permitted. In the town's general industrial plan, industrial zones. Subject to site plan approval by the commission, and so that's only about, that's actually industrial zone, the PI and GI zones, not the POD zone. And this is a POZ zone.
For suggestion of language.
It is, but the screening then it continues with outdoors, outside storage areas shall not extend into the areas required for setback from the street line. Or into the required site yards adjacent to any nonindustrial zone, outdoor storage. Shall be enclosed by buildings, fences, walls, links, earth and burns, evergreen shrubs or trees. And or other acceptable structures or screening as determined by the commission, so as to provide suitable screen from adjacent lots of streets. In no case shall stored merchandise, supplies or other materials exceed the height of the screening. The commission has the discretion to require nonpermeable ground barriers and storage covers. Proper access to all buildings shall be maintained at all times and outside storage shall not interfere with access or required parking. So we also have the provisions in the zoning regulations for unsightly materials, which. Have some limitations on agricultural uses, but also is a provision if we get complaints with regard to unsightly materials.
Well, that's why.
So if you'd like, you can incorporate the the requirements of section six G three with regard to any outdoor storage.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's section seven G three, six, seven, yeah, Romanos. A little. Moment there, reading the lines.
Anything else, though?
Yep. Incorporate operational plan products as presented into approval. I guess for me personally, I'm not inclined to limit what they grow. Except for cannabis. They should be able to run a profitable operation without limitation, without our limitation, limiting the crops that they grow, in my opinion.
The type of growing, it's some of the crops, some of the, some of the don't.
Right.
So.
You never know, she models will say.
It's too big brotherish.
No cannabis.
Agree with that.
And the the notation on the operational list with regard to, you know, the the trucks, the the hours, all those things that you discussed, that they presented was their operational plan. Something typical that you would incorporate.
So there's, I think there's two other things, approval note, note any. What's your triangle?
Change. Geometry.
Okay, no any change to raw water use and agreement needs to be returned to the commission. And as represented, water use would be suspended if fire suppression use is necessary. And then the last item that I should have included earlier. Because it lacks technicality, is that there will be no outdoor PA system.
The water uses.
All the water issues, if if there were a fire or some need to draw on that water, they would suspend their irrigation, that's what it's saying.
Right. Well, this is, then that could be a. If the if the fire departments, sorry, put the bike back on, if the fire department is drawn, there should be a valve that that shuts. On their site, that we don't draw. Anything from them, everything comes from the main, you know what I mean, so if there's a load on that draft of the hydrants. Then their 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 valve, the backflow valve, basically what they call the backflow valve, so we don't. We're we're we don't suck them dry and it stops them using supply too, because it goes both ways. It's a two-way valve, you know, and and if the fire department puts a load on it, drafting from the hydrant. Then that valve, let water go that way towards the facility, it only feeds the fire. When this fire's over with, they pick the person to draft off, but everything opens up.
Should have been worked out with the fire department, right, or water?
I believe in their testimony, they say there would be a backflow valve to prevent water from the facility.
Yeah, the water from the facility coming back, they, you know, we don't want to drain them dry, and we don't want them using water over using fire.
So those that completes the motion.
Just to add that I don't recall. Until just now, a total oversight that if there were outstanding interdepartmental comments.
I thought I said that.
We said that.
Of course you said that. Always, yeah, thank you. Oh, okay.
All right, so we have the motion, we have a second, and we have further discussion on this. And and do we need to restate the motion at all? No?
No, all of. Comments been added on, so that's what I asked for.
Okay, so, so all the, I'm sorry, just to vote on the application right now, or? Yes. No, it's about. Yeah, on the application.
With with conditions.
With.
Good question, no, because you want to be clear. All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
Take an individual vote.
Well, how much would just raise our hand, so all those who were in favor, raise their hand.
We have Joan Daley.
You have June, you have.
June, I'm sorry, Joan, Diane Joycey, and Brian Rogan.
And against.
And. Joan Beale, Andrea Miller, and Nikki Sambuski.
Okay. So the motion passes. Okay. Very good, very, all righty, so that's.
That was a tough one, yeah.
It was, total tough ones, it's something we've never handled before, so. Thank you, but it is tough.
All right.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, we're on to, okay, so we have, next up is that special permit for Linda for the accessory dwelling, that has been moved to March second. So that's all of that, and then let me turn the page, and you guys are waiting. Special permit application for Linda, receive, continue. No, 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 this is.
There are three Linda's on there.
I'm looking at the wrong Linda. You guys are, oh, all right, so we have, all right, we have the application, this is for the old Principes Church, I want to say, oh, that's too bad, I always hate to see.
I make motion to approve, we're all conditions of the staff and commission.
Okay, I I would second that motion, but just for the topic of discussion, because I want to get back to that.
Let me say that, you know, it wasn't on BA.
No, 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 well, you know what it is, I want to go back to that parcel, that right away, easement, whatever.
Yeah, let me go. Second for discussion.
Okay, all right.
I think Joan, I.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. All right, no problem, so the pathway or the easement, which would go from Timberland Park over to, I guess it goes alongside the property. For the Principes, and then I guess it eventually spills out to Bicentennial Park, is that correct?
Yes.
My or pathway would allow us to then travel up to Bicentennial, hook up with Bicentennial.
My understanding is there's an informal trail that goes through there.
Do we want to make that a formal trail? I mean, it's informal right now, but do we want to put that down on paper, so to speak? That we, does that get sent to the council?
Cross, cross easement, both of us could use it.
There was concern about liability, if if they said they would work with.
Well, yeah.
To do it, but the liability was a concern, and so I think they needed to figure out maybe what. Was best for both parties.
Yeah.
To minimize liability.
Ask them to work, but I don't think we can mandate that they. Give us their land for a trail. Okay, we need that.
Can do that, yeah.
You can make it part of the, part of the. The agreement.
Is.
The approval, should I say.
I do think, I know what, like, I've heard it before when we discuss some trails going through people's backyard and things, that there is. State coverage, state liability coverage for hikers and everything, so that they're not horrible.
Tom, Tom.
So, does it have, does it have to be considered a state trail for the state to have liability on it?
Well.
Well, you know, I thought, yeah, they have, you know, like, I mean, I'd say.
Trails in Burlington, believe it or not.
Blue Ridge Trail comes right to.
Right.
As well, Timberland.
Right.
If it's the same trail that goes through Timberland that connects to Blue Ridge, it should be covered.
There's some to, there's some conservation element to it, if there's some conservation agreement, I guess that's a possibility as well. Okay, maybe what you're thinking of.
Land, land, uh, land trust has their liability insurance, and the town has a. Or whatever you want to call it, of damage, if they're using the property, they got to use it anyway, they can't be sued, so.
No.
Yeah, so. As long as there's agreement between parties, the town and. The landowner. Uses, town can use it, it's a, a land merger, right?
And this informal route, do we know where it goes?
I do not, I, did they discuss that at the conservation meeting?
Say, I think they did. Probably where.
No, I mean, on this map.
How slope goes into where the dogs just run and all that other.
I I just looked on the GIS map and the trail isn't mapped on on here, but I do believe that the trails mapped are substantially not for trails that go through the. That are more casual trails through the town ownlands, but they're the trails that are interconnected to the the state and national trails, the blue track. Blue Blaze Trail, the Red Blaze Trail, those that are, connect to other communities as well. I don't know that we have very comprehensive mapping of our. Um, I don't know that we have very comprehensive mapping of our trails.
Park, so.
Right, but all the, all the paths to walk through Bicentennial, I don't think are, are shown on our map layer either. You know, there's lots of less sanctioned trails, no, more of a margin.
That's Jim Horrible.
Well, I.
Regardless, that one is not on mapped trails, but the Conservation Commission was aware of it, um, and Jim.
So is that something that we could, um, investigate? I mean, without holding up the, uh, the project itself?
Um, as indicated, my suggestion would be to incorporate that they work with staff to formalize the tra- the trail access, um, and then if there's a problem doing that is, it gets vetted through the process, then that's part of the process. Is that it, it's a problem and we bring that back to your attention.
Okay. All right. Okay, so, um.
But, and, and of course, the easement would then have to go to town council to be accepted as an easement, you know, and all that too. So that would be a 24 review, you know, along with all of that as well. Um, should it move forward, should it not move forward, probably we, I would intend to bring back to your attention as to why we weren't moving forward with it. Because whatever glitch was found.
Okay. All right, and then, um, I mean, I mentioned fencing at one point, but I think that that kind of puts it there to see where the easement would go. And I think that that might help, um, to separate the public from trying to, you know, cross over into the back of their project. But anyway, so we can work on that too. So that would be with staff. We have a motion in a second. Part of the discussion also, um, first half of comments was to re-strike the parking. Yeah. Um, and then, uh, school zone signage.
And no houses, they burn them all.
Yes. Correct. Modification subjects. Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding this? Okay.
I'm just clarification, um, fencing, I'm concerned about the cost of fencing, so if they negotiate with the town on the cut through between the parks, then if necessary for fencing, I don't want to, I guess I'd prefer not to have fencing, is that requirement?
Uh, well, no, I was just trying to delineate, uh, the area. Um, and also, you know, in a way, would kind of, if you have a pathway and, and it goes out into a parking lot, sometime, or cuts by a parking lot, sometimes people take liberties. And they start to wander around, you know, I mean, they, they get off the track, so to speak, or the beaten path. And they start looking around and, and, and I don't, I don't want to do that. I don't want to put that kind of stress or that sort of unnecessary weight on them. But that's the only reason, um, originally I talked about fencing for a different issue, but bringing to light the possible pathway. Perhaps if there's any problem areas, we may want to have some fencing to help restrict people from coming over into the property. That shouldn't be there.
It's going to be signage.
Well, you could do signage, but some people, you know, they just go the way they want to go.
The path may be within a wooded area as well, just because of the amount of woods that's there. There may be a natural buffer
Yeah.
to a trail that exists. And I'm sorry, we don't know where that trail is.
Yeah, hopefully that'll be it, and we won't, they won't even need the fence.
To work with staff, so I'm hearing work with staff to determine if fencing would be appropriate.
Yes. Are the motions amended? Yep, I think. Motion amended.
Except amendments, the most.
Yeah, everyone's, everyone's, okay, but so then we'll call for the vote. So all those in favor? No problem, thank you. Welcome to town. All right, proposed amendment.
That was unanimous, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yes. The proposed amendment of Linda Austin to abolish the zoning regulations for that. That's continued. Everything else already continued. Uh, yeah, everything's right, we're done.
Yeah.
Is G table?
Uh, G is, G is table, yeah, table. Can I just make one commission comment really quick before we adjourn? I know the hour's late, thank you everyone. Um, there's a community garden in Sheer property on Archer Road. Who is in charge of that? Who oversees the, from the town?
The Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Me, as staff.
Okay, well, can you please tell the Conservation Commission, because I know that they rent out those spaces for gardening to different people. And some of these people out of town, lately I've been noticing every year it gets worse and worse with looking. In other words, it's okay, you've got stuff growing, but then what happens is the fall comes and it's almost like they just let it stay there. And you were driving by and I got sticks, they're leaning, they're all over, there's barrels everywhere. It's really messy.
Are you talking about light?
Well, it's, it's, it's just uncounted. I mean, a, a farmer would basically, if a farmer had staked stuff, or we all have victory gardens, at the end of the season, when you pull up the plants, you pull up the stakes, lay them down, they shouldn't be, I mean, it really looks crappy. So it just really is uncounted, and that's still an active park, so I think the people can take advantage of that. Phenomenal thing, should come and clean your act off, not wait this spring.
So they, they, just as a, the background, um, they, last year got a new, um, person overseeing the garden. She is actually, what's that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, it's guarded behind you. Um, so they, so, and she has done a phenomenal job of bringing the gardeners together to do, um, work sessions and, and processes and stuff like that. Um, over the last two years, there's been a lot of improvements to the organization of the garden.
Okay.
From when I first took it over, so I'm sure if we, um, approach them to, um, to work hard on the spring and fall cleanup and maintenance, that, that will be, I, I think they'll, they'll appreciate it as well. And, you know, sometimes you don't see the forest through the streams, but we do lock the garden on a given date, and I know we did get some complaints from those gardeners. And that's based on our grounds, um, our staff as well, and what they can continue to monitor and be aware of, and, um, and some of the gardeners got locked out from doing their finish work.
Oh, okay.
We opened it a couple of extra days for, uh, to keep it going, because it stayed nice so late, but I suspect a few people were caught off guard this particular year.
Okay.
By that, so we'll, we might address it and, and see if it can be done before spring, or else we'll, we'll ask them to please, when, when it gets unlocked to.
Yeah, here on in, let's close, when they close down.
They have to have it cleaned up by then.
Yeah, clean up, because it is unsightly.
In our notes, the last week, I think it was, there was, but farming market wouldn't be done, next to stop and shop.
Yeah, so Chris had that as a discussion. I haven't been able to discuss it further with him.
Do we have to prove that, uh, function there?
I believe it will have to be, come to you for the first time. We discussed last year that we, um, would be developing, and before we lost our part-time helper, um, she had gotten a bunch of examples of, um, the, the application form for the special event uses.
Yeah.
Um, and we're trying to work through whether it's a form that's administrative, that the commission would rather us handle that way, and have the vetting of what departments it has to go through, and they have to go through all the town departments. Or if each year, each new event, you would, um, see, as you used to see the event each year, see it the first time, and then in subsequent years, the town could handle it, so that kind of got left out.
Where brings them to what they're doing? So yes.
Right, and actually, they don't have to bring the whole list each year. They only have to bring the event, and actually, we've changed that now. So they'll only, they'll be bringing the, the changed list for any event over two hundred and fifty. We expect one, um, new event that I know of already.
The only problem I have there, using that part there, uh, is that someone would have to go in their previous, that was Sweetbirds, we've placed.
I think they're well aware of some of the, the, the conditions of the property. I think that has been, um, that has been raised as a concern.
Well, yeah, they're trying to get.
In the discussions.
Okay, so is there anything else? He got those set for the training attached to it.
Oh, yep, actually, um, that's, I have just those couple of things here, so you'll notice at the bottom and, and at the back of your package, and I think Fran did it in color instead of on a color sheet. March, we have the training, um, that is the one day training, I, March eleventh, thank you. Um, and we, we do the signups, we have it in the budget for commission members, but, um, and it does include the book that we consider kind of a, a reference tool we use for, um, land use law. Um, and, and it's held by the, um, bar association. There's another opportunity I saw in my inbox this week, I don't know that she copied that one yet, because I don't know if I gave it to her in time to get another opportunity out, but, uh, that one might have been from CLEAR, which is the Yukon CLEAR program. They do a lot of land use training as well. So we'll, we'll keep you informed on the opportunities, but if you please let us know, um, perhaps by the next meeting, the third, that will give me time to get checks processed, to then get the payment made to, um, to register anyone interested. Remember that commissioners do need four hours of training.
No, no.
Um, one of the hours has to be on affordable housing, and one of the opportunities you'll see will cover that as well.
Do you know how many hours of training we get up with this eight-hour class?
Hey.
Okay.
Except not the, they're not doing affordable housing during that.
I think they have an affordable section.
Okay, we, we've got to see if it fits that. Yeah, so that's.
It really is, uh, there's some of my friends who are speakers, it really is the most comprehensive.
It is phenomenal.
The guide that you get, this is the March one? Yes.
And it is all day, and it's hard to say through, but it's.
The red materials are very, very good. I do, I have very good friends.
I'm on the favorite. We got ring shine or whatever.
Oh, it's, it's, it's really, I mean, there's great people, you know, and they do it, you know, they do, they've been doing it, there's a group of them, they've been doing it for years.
I just want to send thank you to everybody for your support and the flowers. They were lovely. I did mention it really quickly at the beginning of the meeting.
To the staff, love.
And, thank you. Uh, we did think we were well on our way to catching up, but then of course, that, you know, some, with our new staff who stepped up incredibly, um, and as long with Fran, and I just want to give a shout out to them for keeping the office and the communications rolling, um, especially with the applicants, that was, we got a lot of emails, and they kept them rolling and, and in communication and in communication with me as well. Um, I do want to note that I do have a vacation coming up, uh, immediately after our next meeting, so then I'll be gone. And I leave on the third, seven o'clock in the morning on the third.
Our next meeting is technically on the thirtieth first, right?
Oh, yeah, well, that's next. So we have a, we have a P O C D meeting next Thursday on the twenty-sixth, at six thirty. And then we have the informational meeting with town council on cannabis uses being set up for the, the thirty-first. Everyone can, oh, to P O C D, oh, it's a public meeting, complete participation, and the more participation, the better. I think, um, you had decided a few months ago that, you know, we may not change the members of the committee at this point because of the, the length in the process, but all participation is encouraged regardless.
The twenty-sixth?
It'll be in, in the Doc Mac room downstairs. Yeah, it's also, uh,
What time is it?
Virtual, and I think I've been including everyone on those invitations each by six thirty. Yeah, you'll get a, the invitation with the agenda, and our consultant basically runs the meeting, so.
With the Zoom link?
Yeah, and it's a Zoom link, so you can participate. I think, at least one, I think, participated in remotely, I think. Yeah, I think you did at least one, if not more, so, yeah, but you'll get an email. I sent it to everyone regardless, because the participation is key.
And when's the council meeting?
The thirty-first, Tuesday, the thirty-first at seven P M.
Do I need to just send a note to you that that's at seven?
No, we know.
Yeah, that's at seven, because I, I think we're maybe doing an audience committee.
Oh, okay, so that's why it's at seven.
Well, you're going anywhere good.
Florida, to my sister's house.
Oh, that's good.
So, yeah.
Jordan's good.
It's a beach, it's nice.
Okay, um, it's ten thirty-three, and I think I'll listen to a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Diane, do I have a second? Second by Nikki for the discussion. All those in favor, aye, opposed, so hold.